Good evening. Today's November 4th, 2019. The forty-sixth meeting of the Twenty-Third Council will come to order. All councilors are present this evening. We are now on Item Two, Moment of Silence, and the Pledge of Allegiance led by Counselor Winter. And we have a couple of students in here. I don't know if they found their way. Are they here? From Alamosa Elementary? I heard they were by a door that was locked and they're trying to get in here. So you know what? I'm going to read some of the instructions and give them a couple of minutes because I know Sharice was guiding them this way. So Civic Plaza Parking Passes are provided for members of the public. You can obtain a parking pass from council staff at the signup table. The council will take a break at approximately 7:00 PM this evening if needed. We want tonight's proceedings to be as civil and respectful as possible. Please do not make any personal attacks and please no applause or other outbursts during the meeting. The meeting will go a lot smoother if we are respectful of one another. I really don't want to start. I guess we can actually go to Counselor Winter to lead us in the Moment of Silence and Pledge of Allegiance, but we have some students that will be entering shortly who are going to recite it in Spanish because they're going to have to give us all a few lessons over here. Counselor Winter.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which stands our nation, our empire, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
They just arrived. The students from Alamosa can come to the front. And I think we need to stand one more time. So this is Raoul Soltero.
Yep.
Are you Raoul?
Yep.
And Emily Soltero. They are a fifth grader and first grader from Alamosa Elementary and they're going to be reciting the pledge in Spanish for us. Are you ready?
Yep. A la felidad, a la... Wait, just let me remember. Please, I'm very nervous.
[laughing].
[unintelligible] la bandera de Estados Unidos de América porque representa una acción bajo Dios y visible, vital y para todos.
Yay. Thank you. Thank you for being here. Did you want to introduce yourselves?
All right. So I'm Raoul. As you know, I'm from Alamosa Elementary School. This is my sister Emily. Que es presentarte. She's a first grader and I guess she's a little shy.
Well, I want to thank you for being here again. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are now on Item Three, Proclamations and Presentations. Counselor Sanchez and Borrego.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to invite to the podium the individuals that will be receiving this proclamation from the... Betty Miller? Are you receiving? Come on up, please. Is Board President Bobby Richardson here?
Yes.
Thank you. The proclamation reads, "Whereas each November, communities across the country observe National Diabetes Month to bring attention to diabetes and its impact on millions of Americans. And whereas an estimated 9.4 of the U.S. population is living with diabetes and another 84 million Americans have prediabetes, and whereas approximately 2 million of New Mexican adults have diabetes, and whereas diabetes can increase the risk of heart disease and kidney failure and can result in lower limb amputation, adult onset blindness, as well as lower life expectancies, and whereas the 2019 focus on National Diabetes Month in partnership with the National Heart, Lung, and Blood Institute is the link between diabetes and cardiovascular disease and..."
And whereas nearly 1 in 4 adults, 7.2 million, are unaware they are living with diabetes, and another 84 million Americans are unaware that they have prediabetes, and whereas with regular checkups, a person can take the steps to manage diabetes, which can also help lower the chances of having heart disease or a stroke, and whereas a knowledgeable community can help achieve improvement in health of the community by working together towards the goal of better management of diabetes and prevention of some cases of type 2 diabetes. Be it proclaimed that the council, the governing body of the city of Albuquerque, hereby recognizes November as National Diabetes Month in Albuquerque.
Thank you very much for having us here. And we have enjoyed being here for the last three years, so it's really great to come back again in another year. Hopefully, I'm able to do that as well. It is a pleasure, but I'd like to do a little history for you. In 2014, the idea of having a diabetes awareness program was set up, and we became a 501(c)(3) in 2015. And we've had three expos during that time. It was really a hard work for us because we are a small board and everybody has to contribute. And we are having one in Edgewood at the Legacy Church. We have had previously two in Albuquerque, but we decided, the board decided, to have spread wings. We've had it in Raton. We've had it two in Albuquerque and now one in the East Mountains. So if you have an opportunity to be there on November the 16th, that is going to be our celebration for Diabetes Awareness Month. And everyone can come. It's free admission. Introduce my Board President, Bobby Richardson.
Yes, Bobby Richardson, past district governor and also currently now the president of the New Mexico Lions Diabetes Awareness Program. And on behalf of the New Mexico Lions, again, great gratitude of you presenting the proclamation to us this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counselor Sanchez.
And before we have you come up and receive this proclamation, I am honored to present this proclamation to the Diabetes Association for all of your work. I myself am a diabetic. I am on the insulin pump and now I'm using the sensor. And I've done much better now that I'm listening to my doctor. I've got Dr. Ferraro, who is my doctor. I've got the great doctor, but the patient doesn't always follow the orders. But the work that you guys have done over the years has really impressed me. And also, my policy analyst, Elaine Romero, is battling type 1 diabetes and she's also on the diabetic pump. But it's come a long way over the years and, you know, there's 2 million adults here in New Mexico that are fighting diabetes, and it's a challenge each and every day for myself and I know for the many people that are dealing with it. But at the same time, if you follow doctors' orders and do what your doctors are telling you and try to eat right, it works out much better. But again, thank you for your work and your commitment to this very terrible cause and disease. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you for your testimony, too.
Counselor Borrego.
Thank you both for being here this evening. And trust me, we're always watching Counselor Sanchez and his policy analyst. I personally am hypoglycemic, which is the opposite of diabetic. And so we also have to watch our diets and be sure that our levels are regular. But, you know, there's a lot of people living with this disease in New Mexico, and I'm not really sure why that is, but I think it's great to bring awareness. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for your testimony.
Rachel Carmen, are you here? Hi, welcome. It looks like we left you out last time, so [laughing] better late than never, huh? So I'm going to go ahead and just start reading this. Rachel, she is a programmer analyst, too, for the Department of Municipal Development. She was nominated under the category of Health and Wellness by a fellow employee. Rachel Carmen has been a dedicated Better Health Ambassador since 2017. She has led the health classes for employees and has secured space on the department's electronic boards to include wellness initiatives. Rachel initiated a process to streamline run-for-the-zoo registration and packet distribution for 500 city employees and has also initiated the Better Health Ambassador SharePoint website to allow 39 ambassadors to share materials and sign up for events online. Rachel is passionate about wellness and is doing an outstanding job to keep all employees healthy. Thank you. Did you want to say a few words?
I'm honored to be here tonight and very grateful for this award, and I thank you very much for it.
Oh, come up and receive your award. Congratulations again. Next, we have a presentation from Sherek Roenhau regarding the PNM Business Energy Efficiency Star Award. The award is being presented to Saif Ismail, the city of Albuquerque's Energy and Sustainability Program Manager. I may have massacred that. Welcome, Sherek.
Madam President, good evening, and members of the City Council and leaders from Mayor Keller's administration and all city staff. First of all, congratulations to Plaza del Sol, the city of Albuquerque and the city of Albuquerque for its outstanding energy efficiency projects. The PNM Business Energy Efficiency Star Awards are based on the highest amount of electricity saved for energy efficiency projects completed in 2018. These awards are given across 11 communities PNM serves throughout the state. We are pleased to recognize Plaza del Sol and its commitment to energy efficiency through the PNM Retro Commissioning Program and has made you an Energy Efficiency Star for going above and beyond with energy savings. This project specifically contributed 171,342 kilowatt-hours of savings, enough to energize 25 homes for one year and the equivalent of removing 92 metric tons of carbon dioxide from the air and saving 56,000 gallons of water. Since 2007, PNM energy efficiency programs have provided more than 80 million in customer rebates and helped save almost 3.2 billion kilowatt-hours of electricity, enough to power approximately 470,000 homes for a year. These programs have kept an estimated 2 million metric tons of carbon dioxide out of the air and saved over 1.1 billion gallons of water. Thank you for your participation in the PNM energy efficiency programs and your continued support on our efforts to achieve a sustainable energy future for New Mexico. We also would like to commend your leadership, the City Council's leadership, Mayor Keller's leadership, and look forward in continuing to work with the city of Albuquerque to achieve its sustainability goals. With that said, I'd like to present an award to Saif, who's been a good partner in energy efficiency as well as other sustainability projects. And I just want to commend the leadership of Albuquerque for moving toward New Mexico's energy future.
Thank you.
Saif, did you want to say a few words? You might want to go to that mic there.
Okay, sure. Thank you so much, you know. It's an honor and I appreciate the administration's support, director's support, and everyone who supports the goals to get more, you know, more efficient and get the big star for the whole city. That's our goal. Thank you.
Well, thank you and congratulations again. And I just want to say, as I always talk about the arches on West Central, my analyst was just letting me know that you're always on it and very responsive. As soon as they go out, you're getting them back on, so thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Now, we are on Economic Development Discussion. There is none. Item Five, Administration Question and Answer Period. Our councilors, are there any questions for the administration? Counselor Winter.
Thank you, Madam President. Just want to talk a little bit about the rail yards. I went out to the press conference. It was fabulous. First time I saw it and I, they told me the process and how it was done, trying to save as much money, reusing things, and I thought it was just beautiful. So I just wanted to say how I always have liked the rail yards and have really been working to see something happen and was very excited about that plaza. Thank you.
Counselor Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam President. I was at the Music, New Mexico Music Hall of Fame ceremony this Saturday, and I just want to thank the staff at the Chemo Theater. They did a great job with all the work that was being done and just the presentation. And the entertainers were very impressed. We had a lot of people from out of state that came in and they were very impressed by what they saw. And also, the work that still needs to be done in the Chemo Theater, but that's really a true gem in our community.
Counselor Borrego, followed by Counselor Betten.
I just wanted to let the administration know that we had a kind of mini press conference this weekend at the corner of Irving and Rainbow where there's been a lot of accidents. And I invited Director Pat Montoya and our new acting commander, Jennifer Garcia, and they were both there. So I was really happy and I think the community was really happy that they're looking at the options for improvements to that intersection.
Counselor Betten.
Yeah, I too want to give kudos to the rail yard celebration. There's so many people out there so happy to see what was done, and I think it was done very cost-effectively and cleverly. It's taking care of drainage, storm drainage, as well as providing that recreational option and really allows people to, anything we can do for our taxpayers to see why we bought it in the first place, which has been a long time now. And now, the fact that we really have an opportunity to move forward with it now with the state legislative support, really great support from the legislature and hopefully the support from our own voters. So that was really nice. And then also, just wanted to give kudos and congratulations. Thirty-five years of our open space system. It's a feather in our cap. It's second to none in the country. And so it's really nice to see the folks there who did that work in the first place, who started up with the citizen activism to create the open space system. That's what it was. It was really a lot of citizens activists and some city councilors way back in the mid-'70s, so hallelujah. And congratulations.
Counselor Sanchez.
Thank you one more time, Madam President. One more thing, I was also at the Convoy of Hope Saturday morning. That was a fabulous turnout. I want to thank Brian Ellerid, Mayor Keller, for his work in the council, for their support. They gave over 10,000 food baskets out, 2,000 pair of shoes. It was haircuts portraits for some of the families, for the underserved in our community. And they had to wait an extra hour because they wouldn't open up the convention center because there were some issues that were going on inside the convention center. But they waited out in the cold, probably for an hour longer than they should have, but the event really turned out very, very well and it really helped many members of our community.
Thank you, Counselor Sanchez. And administration, you're on a roll tonight.
Yeah, best Q and A ever. Thank you.
We are now on the Journal. Counselor Borrego.
Thank you, Madam President. I move approval of the October 21st Journal.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion passes. Item Seven, Communications and Introductions. Are there any changes to the letter of introduction? Counselor Borrego.
Madam President, thank you. I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of placing M6 on tonight's agenda for final action. M6 is reaffirming the city of Albuquerque's commitment to the prevention of child abuse and neglect and urging the New Mexico State Legislature to strengthen our laws pertaining to violence against children.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes.
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 Oppose, no. Motion passes. I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of introducing R206 and placing it on the November 18th council agenda for final action. R206 is establishing legislative and budget priorities for the city of Albuquerque for the 2020 New Mexico State Legislature.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes.
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 Oppose, no. Motion passes. Counselor Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of introducing R207 and placing it on the November 18th council agenda for final action. R207 is amending the adopted capital implementation program of the city of Albuquerque by changing the scope of existing lodger's tax projects.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Counselor Davis.
Madam President, I would like to ask that we not approve this for late introduction and instead use, at the very least, sort of the normal process. It's my understanding this might be about making a preference for the siting of the soccer practice facility at the west side. And I know just, what, two weeks ago, this council decided to defer that decision until after we had a site evaluation survey. It's my understanding in talking to the administration that both New Mexico United and Albuquerque Youth Soccer have been compiling their needs assessments based on our request for that information, and they've been complying with the city's process for doing that. This, to me, seems a little early, and we had committed to working through a fair site analysis before doing that introduction. And so I would object and hope that we would deny this tonight so that we could use the process we designed a couple of weeks ago.
Any other discussion? If not, there's a motion and a second on the floor to move the rules be suspended for the purpose of introducing R207. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. So that's three, five? All those in favor, say yes and raise your hand. Oppose, no, and raise your hand. Got it? Counselor Borrego.
I move approval of the letter of introduction.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion passes. Next item is Item Eight, Report to the Committee. There are none.
Madam President. Oh, sorry for the interruption. I just want to clarify that the motion for R207 for late introduction was actually a fail vote because we need a two-thirds vote, so that item will be placed on the... So the sponsor can opt to introduce that piece of legislation at our next meeting.
So we are now on deferrals and withdrawals. Counselors, are there any deferrals or withdrawals at this time? Counselor Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. This is deferrals and withdrawals, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Regarding EC436, Tony Sanchez Drive Right Away, et cetera, this has to do with the Will of Wood Homeowners Association. I move deferral until February 3rd.
Second. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion passes.
And the second one is O72, amending Section 1420, the dilapidated commercial buildings and properties ordinance to implement permanent procedures following the conclusion of a 24-month pilot project. I move deferral until January 6th.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion passes.
And, Madam President, I'd like to, I can wait till after the deferrals, but I'd like to move for reconsideration on the communications introductions. I thought that Counselor Sanchez wanted to do it for final action tonight. Looks like he wants to do it on the 18th, and so in that regard, I can vote for that. So I'll move reconsideration, if that's okay, on the introduction of R207.
There's a motion and a second for reconsideration. All those in favor say yes and raise your hand.
Yes.
Yes. Oppose, no.
No.
And so that's the reconsideration, so that passed?
Yes.
Do we have to take another vote?
Did it pass? Yes.
Now we have to take a vote.
Yes.
You make your motion. Now you make your motion.
Okay.
Okay, I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of introducing R207 and placing it on the November 18th council agenda for final action. R207 is amending the adopted capital implementation program of the city of Albuquerque by changing the scope of existing lodger's tax projects.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes and raise your hand.
Madam President.
Yes.
Can we have a little discussion? I'm a little confused and so, Counselor, I'm not sure I understand what you were talking about.
Is that for me, Counselor Winter? Thank you, Counselor Winter. Yeah, no, my objection is not that we don't have this conversation. I think this council is part of that sports package conversation. We remember we had two competing amendments, one to place the soccer complex at the west side, one at Mesa del Sol, and both sponsors, myself and Counselor Sanchez, agreed to withhold those until the administration completed a site assessment to give us some data on which site was best suited for the purpose. It's my understanding that both the New Mexico United, for whom that practice facility would be the key tenant, and Albuquerque Youth Soccer Association, and some of those folks are here with us tonight, have been compiling their needs assessment to submit to the city for site selection consideration. It's my understanding that that process was, as we told them, to be done by the end of the year. And we also asked the lodger's tax board to weigh back in with this council on their evaluation of that final recommendation. I know we may have seen that by email, but we haven't heard that from them yet. And so I think it's just early for us to force this vote in two weeks on this decision before we've completed that public input process that we committed to two weeks ago. And so although I don't think we need a piece of resolution at all, I certainly don't think we should introduce it and force it for a vote at the next meeting, I think we should commit to our original schedule.
Madam President, Counselor Sanchez.
Counselor Sanchez.
Counselor Davis, this has been going on for some time now. I know that we have been working on trying to get the complex either at Mesa del Sol or on Albuquerque's west side. We've been working on trying to get the facility on Albuquerque's west side. I know there was a letter that came in. Plus, I know that there are some of the activists that are trying to get the location at Mesa del Sol. I mean, I'm trying to work through a process, but it doesn't seem like anybody else is trying to work through it. They basically have their minds made up on where they want this. You know, I think we had a decision at the last meeting where we could have voted on this, and I truly believe that the ideal location is Albuquerque's west side with the $40 million community stadium that was just built, the Jennifer Riordan Sparks Kindness Field of Dreams. You know, we're looking at the indoor sports complex. There will be adequate parking. It will be a great location. You've got a lot of young families that live on Albuquerque's west side that will be playing soccer on Albuquerque's west side if that's the decision of this council. And I just feel we're ready to move and make that decision. There's been a lot of planning over a long period of time. This decision has been going on for some time.
Counselor Harris.
Yes, and my reason for voting for this is not to vote to pass it in two weeks, but just to vote to hear it in two weeks. And I promise you, there's no guarantee I'm going to vote for it in two weeks. I mean, if we're not ready, then I'll vote to defer. But this, it just seems like a timing thing. If Counselor Sanchez had gotten to the president on Thursday, it probably would be a holdover. So the only reason why we're doing this is probably wait it till Friday or Saturday or something. So, you know, it certainly doesn't indicate my inclination how to vote. It's just an indication I'm okay. It's just an indication I'm okay with just holding it over and keeping an open mind on the 18th if that's what happens.
Ms. Nyir.
Thank you, Council President Penya. Counselor Winter, if it's the will of the council to hear this in two weeks, we'll do all that we need to to make sure that we gather the community input and have a presentation so that the council is fully informed at that time. I think with the session coming up, it does make sense to move as quickly as we can on this so that local legislators can make the investment if that's what they choose to do.
Counselor Benton.
Yeah, I mean, I think this is a pretty big decision. And we did have all that discussion. We haven't had a discussion with the Lodger's Board. I think I saw the letter myself, but there's been no discussion around that letter. I don't necessarily agree with everything in that letter. But besides that, this is the discussion we had that I recall, as far as I'm concerned, any of the projects on there should certainly stand up to scrutiny and at least have robust discussion. But this one in particular, for the reasons that were mentioned by both Counselor Sanchez and Counselor Davis. So I don't want to move too fast on this.
Okay, so there's a motion in a second on the floor for the rules to be suspended for the purp... Oh. Yeah, I was just asking you to repeat. Yeah, I was... Okay. There's a motion in a second on the floor to move the rules be suspended for the purpose of introducing R207 and placing it on the November 18th council agenda for final action. All those in favor say yes and raise your hand.
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no, and raise your hand. So that's five, four.
Yeah. Madam President, I've got a question. So what is the processes at this point and what's the timeline we're looking for? Because I would hate to wait months and months, you know, but I do understand the input too. But the sooner the better.
Madam President, if I could respond, or Ms. Yar can. I know Ms. Yar is the council's designee for the sort of evaluation group. But I know we can get this done in a few weeks and folks have been asked to submit their information, but I think it would be important for us to give them a hard deadline and maybe a time that the council could have a study session or bring it back to some more formal presentation, I think would be helpful. And maybe we could schedule that in two weeks, but...
Counselor Borrego.
I would just caution, and I know that this is a heated issue, but I would just caution us not to hear this in the media. And, you know, we do an evaluation and we look at all the sites that are available to us and look at traffic and transportation and access and circulation patterns and, you know, all of the things that are, that would go with this sort of evaluation and look at it in a fair and equitable way.
Counselor Benton.
Yeah, I certainly agree with Counselor Borrego on that. And I like the idea of the study session. I know it's hard to schedule stuff this time of year, but I think we could figure out one and hopefully, you know, kind of have that round robin and more free-flowing discussion about what we hear from the analysis. And of course, our friends from both sides and the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board and everybody could come to that and speak as well, so, and hear the discussion.
Ms. Yara.
Yes, Madam President, I just want to say that if the sponsor would like to include this on the letter of introduction at the next meeting, I can make sure that I can plan a study session shortly thereafter with the appropriate parties.
That'll work. We go to committee now and that'll be in two weeks. So it would probably have to be sometime next week.
Yeah, Madam President, actually, the motion for late introduction failed. And so Counselor would need to bring it back up at the next meeting. We are not having an FGO committee meeting in November, so it will need to go to the December FGO committee meeting.
Okay, then we can actually bring it back the same way we did tonight. And again, I think that Ms. Nyir brought up a very good point that, you know, right now, we are talking to our legislators and we have several of the West Side legislators that are advocating for the West Side location because of all the energy that is going on with the indoor sports complex, the Jennifer Riordan Sparks Kindness Complex, and also the community stadium. I mean, a lot of great things are going on there. And I know that, and I was on the county commission at one time when we looked at putting the soccer complex at Mesa del Sol. And nothing has happened in a long time. I know Mr. Chavis has been advocating for that location. I know there was a letter sent from the United team. And I talked to the owner and I said, this is a city facility. This is not a United facility that the United team can also utilize, but it will also be utilized for the entire community and not just United Soccer Team.
Counselor Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. And one thing I assumed would happen is that the president could hold this over, I mean, next meeting. It didn't have to go to committee. Does the president have the ability to hold it over?
Yes, Madam President. Counselor Harris, that was actually the motion that was being made for late introduction for holdover to the November 18th meeting, and that motion failed, so...
I know, but the president, on November 18th, she could hold it over until the first meeting in December.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, so that's up to the president between now and the 18th. Okay, thank you.
Okay. So then we are now back on deferrals and withdrawals. We're good? Okay, so then we will go to, I have a few, but I will go to Counselor Benton and Jones.
I'll handle that, Madam President. Move a deferral from final, move a deferral of O79, adopting zoning conversion rules for properties in batch two of the Phase Two zoning conversion effort as directed by City Council Resolution R1829 and updating the official zoning map. Move deferral until November 18th.
There's a motion in a second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion passes. Next item, R178, amending the adopted capital implementation program of the city of Albuquerque by supplementing current appropriations for the Adenale Crestview Bluff Open Spaceland acquisition. I move deferral until November 18th.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion passes. EC 467, agricultural lease between the city of Albuquerque and JT Farms Incorporated. I move deferral until December 2nd?
Second.
There's a motion in a second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion passes. R178, amending the adopted capital implementation program... Nope, I read that, sorry. Counselor Benton and Penya, do you want to read that? Or do you want me to read it?
Yeah, this is CS, R189, amending the composition of the Board of Housing Commissioners for the Albuquerque Housing Authority. I move deferral until November 18th.
Second. There's a motion in a second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion passes. We are now on the consent agenda. Are there any changes to the consent agenda?
Madam President.
Counselor Benton.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to pull item D, which is EC 19466, removing real estate agreement for Fire Station Two.
Okay. So with that, we don't need a motion on that, right? So anyway, so for, before we finalize this, for the individuals on tonight's consent agenda who are being appointed to serve on a board or commission, can you please stand if you're in the audience? Well, welcome, and we want to thank you for your willingness to serve. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Madam President. I move approval of the consent agenda. Second.
There's a motion in a second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion passes. Counselor Benton.
Thank you, Madam President. Just wanted to ask about this item briefly. I had heard about it, but the specific question, for whoever knows best, is what was the interaction with the neighborhood association on this sale?
Ms. Nyir.
Council President Penya, Counselor Benton, I would invite our Real Property Division, which is now at a DMD, to come down and give comment on that.
Madam President, Counselor Benton, I was not involved in this actual transaction, but let me just relate to you the information that I do have from Fire. It's my understanding that in the negotiations with the church, that the neighborhood association was not contacted or they were not informed about the sale. And that's from Fire.
So they were not involved?
They were not.
I'd like to move a deferral of two weeks. Is that going to be a major hurdle or anything if we've got a two-week delay on this?
Madam President, Counselor Benton, I don't believe so. I know that there's an offer made and that we're considering that, but we're not ready to close on the deal.
Understood. I mean, it's a key little nugget there in the neighborhood and I just want to be sure we've checked that box completely. So thank you. I move a two-week deferral, Madam President.
There's a motion in a second for two-week deferral of EC 19466. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion passes. We are now on general public comment. There'll be a two-minute time limit. The light on the podium will be green for the first minute and a half, and then the light will turn yellow and the bell will ring indicating you have 30 seconds remaining to wrap up your comments. At two minutes, the light will turn red and ring to indicate that your time is up. Our first speaker this evening is Mr. Don Schrader, followed by Jill Frauley, followed by Geraldine Amato. If you can please make your way to the front.
I absolutely condemn the beheadings and mass murders committed by ISIS. Are the beheadings by U.S.-backed Saudi Arabia less evil than ISIS beheadings? Was the U.S. murder of tens of thousands of women and children in Iraq less evil than ISIS murders? Was the U.S. murder of hundreds of thousands of women and children in Vietnam, Laos, Cambodia less evil than ISIS murders? Is the U.S.-backed Israeli murder of hundreds of Palestinian boys and girls less evil than ISIS murders? Was the U.S. murder of tens of thousands of women and children in El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, Nicaragua less evil than ISIS murders? Was Obama's murder by drones of many women and children in Pakistan, Afghanistan, Yemen less evil than ISIS murders? Do we understand that every time the U.S. murders families in other nations, it fuels more hatred, more revenge toward this nation? The U.S. created and supported violent Islamic extremists in Pakistan in the 1980s. Ronald Reagan glorified them as freedom fighters against the Soviets. Sadly, as Martin Luther King Jr. said 52 years ago, "The greatest purveyor of violence in the world today is my own government."
Thank you. Jim? Jim Frauley.
Jill.
Jill?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's okay. Good evening, the city council, Madam President. I'm here to...
My microphone over there.
I'm talking in this microphone.
I can't hear it.
I can't help it. So...
Thank you. Excuse me.
I want to talk about the nuisance structure of the 7-Eleven at Solano and Central. And I want to testify that I have lived on that street 25 years. And I can see people laying on the sidewalk in front of that property when I go to that property to buy gas or any whatever I would like to buy. People approach me and panhandle. There are people laying on the ground. I brought a picture this evening, which I'm happy to share, of somebody laying on the ground on that property when I went inside and told the people that were working there that somebody laying on the ground. They say we have been instructed not to approach these people. So I've often seen people laying on the ground in various states of undress. They appear to be either homeless, mentally ill, or drug addicted. So are we all on the same page about the place that I'm talking about, which is the 7-Eleven in Solano and Central? And it's part of my life because it's a half a block from my house. So if anybody has a question, I'm very capable of answering. I don't need to make a lengthy statement. I just, it's a tremendous nuisance to the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Ms. Geraldine Amato, followed by Gloria Faber, followed by Roy Miller.
So is this one for short people, this microphone?
Yes.
The litany of lies recited in English in the worship of the federal flag should be followed with the same litany in Spanish, while both languages are those of the conquerors, the conquistadores. I guess that's fitting. Right now, we have a big circus about impeachment going on in Washington, D.C., while at the same time, people, refugees trying to get across the southern border are being interned in concentration camps. Children are being separated from their families. They're being tormented and tortured, raped and murdered. That's not impeachable offenses according to the character of the people that control the federal government. And now it's no longer even in the headlines or the bylines, impeachment circuses over there in Washington, D.C. Why the American people, the ones that have courage and good character, are willing to put up with these charades in this society? Then we have the circuses of campaign, campaign circuses. The ballot count has nothing to do with who's put in office these days. Read people's books like Code Red by Jonathan Simon. Since the full computerization of the balloting process in 2002, forget about ballot count. The ballot count is just conformed to who's appointed. The ballot count does not put people in office. It's a marketing thing, a seasonal marketing thing for people to make some money selling campaign literature, holding so-called, what do you call them, fake debates, et cetera. Whoever's going to be in the presidential federal office is already picked by those who control the economy of this nation, namely those who control the central bank and the international connections that that bank has with all the major corporate governments of the world.
Thank you. Gloria Faber, followed by Roy Miller.
Thank you, Madam President and city councilors. And thank you for allowing me to indulge you for a couple of minutes. My name is Gloria Faber. I'm the executive director for New Mexico Youth Soccer Association. I wanted you to be aware of our organization, what we represent. We are the U.S. Youth Soccer State Association and the U.S. United States Soccer Federation State Association for Youth Soccer in New Mexico. We represent 23,000 registered players and coaches across the state of New Mexico. We run 18 leagues through our affiliate members. And in the Albuquerque area, we have 6,300 registered youth soccer players. With that, we also have 600 registered coaches and 400 certified federation soccer referees that participate in our programs. The reason I'm here tonight is I wanted to advocate for a soccer complex. And we understand that there are some city funds that may be available that can be allocated towards the project that we've been working on for approximately a year. That is the Mesa del Sol Regional Outdoor Sports Complex. And the reason I got involved in this project over a year ago was because we were looking at a soccer facility in the Albuquerque area where we could host various regional soccer events and national soccer events. We get asked to do that all the time from our, from our national governing bodies. The reason we are interested in Mesa del Sol is we believe that it's more shovel-ready than any other site right now. It's 187 acres. We need to have at least 22 soccer fields available to bid regional events. And that is for in excess of 200 teams visiting Albuquerque for over a week. That's a huge financial impact for the city. And we believe this is also a benefit to the community and the various programs that we run in the Albuquerque area. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Davis. Counselor Davis.
Gloria, really quickly, thank you for bringing this, and I appreciate you bringing some of the information. I know those of us who have been working on Mesa del Sol for a while
Yes.
know that this is not sort of a planned concept, but it's already sort of there, right?
Right.
Can you remind me how many fields are already out there?
So, right now, there's six fields that are being used by Yaffle Football, and then there is, of those six fields, one of them is being used by the New Mexico United Team to practice.
Thank you. And just to clarify and to be clear, I know that you all have been working with the county on this, and I know the city last year
Right.
as part of our legislative package endorsed supporting this process and building a new, new local field on the west side.
Right.
But you folks believe you need at least 22 fields, is that what I heard?
We're hoping for 32 soccer fields.
32 long-term, but 22 for regional?
Right. It's a minimum of 22 fields to bid Far West Regionals, a regional event that we've hosted before at the Bernalio Soccer Complex on the Santa Ana Pueblo.
Yep.
There's 22 soccer fields there right now, and they're just over full right now. We have egress problems and all sorts of issues. So, the soccer community is not very visible on the weekends here in the Albuquerque area because they're all in Bernalio playing soccer. So, we'd like to, we need the Bernalio facility. It is the host to two of our leagues. The Duke City Soccer League, practice, or I'm sorry, runs their league out there in the fall and in the spring, and then the Adult Soccer League plays on Sundays out during the same schedule. The problem is, across the country, is playing time and the window, and the window for us is always in the fall and in the spring. And so, we, like I said, we turn events away. We don't grow our programs because we just don't have soccer fields to do that. So, we're hoping to get more, and 32 soccer fields will allow us to have multiple events going on at the same time. But we've got our eye on the big prize, and the big prize is hosting the National League, and National League is 352 teams. And for us, we need to have a facility that's surrounded by hotels that are affordable and that there's transportation. The airport is near Mesa del Sol, and we love the west side. We want soccer fields on the west side as well, but for this particular project and serving the community, we think Mesa del Sol is shovel-ready, and we support that.
Thank you very much, and I think you heard our conversations earlier. It looks like we're going to try to get some more public hearings on this, and so thank you for advocacy and hope you'll come join us.
Terrific. Thank you very much.
Counselor Sanchez.
Thanks. I have a couple of questions for you also. First and foremost, I know that you're saying that you worked with the County Sports Advisory Board for the last 12 months. That has been in place now for several years, and I've also worked with them, and they were looking at the both sites initially, and the first study that came out favored Albuquerque's west side. They went back, and I'm not sure what was done, but the second site did favor Mesa del Sol. But I know that if it's located on Albuquerque's west side, that it can accommodate the soccer community. There is several acres of property there available also. Also, if there are tournaments that are going on, well, they're having a concert at the pavilion, that could be problematic because you will not have the parking facility available for those tournaments. But again, we'll work through this process and hopefully come out with a solution that's going to be feasible to the soccer community and to the citizens of our community.
Terrific. Thank you.
Counselor Borrego.
Oh, thank you for coming today. So, I just had a couple of questions. So, you said that you need, and by the way, I was his planner who put in the six soccer fields at Mesa del Sol.
Wonderful. Thank you.
So, I'm very familiar with that and the pavilion. I just wondered, you said you need 32 fields to make it successful?
Well, it can be successful with as little as the 10 fields that we're asking for immediately because that would add to the six fields that exist. That would allow us to host some smaller state events. Tournaments normally, normally take around 10 to 20 fields to run successful events, but to host a regional event, we need 22, a minimum of 22 soccer fields.
A minimum of 22, then?
Minimum of 22 for regional events. For national events, it's more so because it's more teams that are involved.
And just out of curiosity, since I have not attended, I have to be honest, a lot of soccer games.
Yeah.
How many people do you expect to attend, you know, at these events? Are they simultaneous? Are they, how does that, how does that work? I mean, do you have, like, six events going at the same time, or one event, or how does that, I mean, what kind of traffic are you talking about?
We have quite a bit of traffic. So, right now, in May, we run concurrent events out at the soccer complex on the Santa Ana Pueblo, and those concurrent events are, our state championship event is going on along with other clubs running different soccer tournaments. And so, right now, that could be anywhere from about 150 teams to 200 teams is max that it can house. A state cup is unique because it's one game a day for the participants, so it's different than the other tournaments that are running concurrent because they may have multiple games for the younger kids. So, the complex, the importance of the size of the complex is for regional events. Those regional events bring about 200, and we've hosted in 2010 and 2014, so we do have some numbers. So, that is 220 teams. It's grown over the years. It should be around 240 teams now. Of that, we have 16 local New Mexico teams that participate. So, all of the other teams, excuse me, are coming from out of town.
So, on average, how many cars do you anticipate would attend one of these games? Like, you know, 200 cars, 100 car? I mean, what would you, and you could take a minute to catch your breath?
I'm sorry. Thank you. Sorry about that.
That's okay. I hope you're okay.
I'm not used to talking so much. So, cars is a little different. Out in Bernalio, they charge for parking, and on a Saturday, excuse me, on a Saturday, there can be, they collect about $5.00 every car that goes in, and that's about $12,000 a day for league play.
For one game?
Pardon me?
For one game.
For, no, for one day.
For a series of games?
Yes.
Then there's several games
Yes.
occurring. How many, on average, like four or five games, maybe?
Oh, no. So, an event, an event like that would have about 126 games going on.
About 126 games.
Right.
So, the traffic impact analysis for either of these two sites, be it the west side or Mesa del Sol, is going to be a key component to, you know, how we analyze it, or, you know, a proper site for access. And I happen to know that the only way in and out of Mesa del Sol is Bobby Foster Road. So, that's why I'm asking these questions, is, you know. And then you also mentioned that hotels, there's access to hotels and airports, in the airport area, I guess is what you're talking about?
Right.
In terms of the hotels?
Right.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
I so much appreciate your...
Thank you. Our next speaker is Roy Miller, followed by Steve Frazier, followed by Carol Slindney.
I'm Dr. Ray Miller, I'm the past president of telecommunications for the DEAF Incorporated, past president of the Association of Late Deaf and Adults, and the past president of hearing loss link. This is my interpreter, Carol Slindney, in case there are any questions to be asked of me. As a former member of the City Council, not here, but in Oklahoma City, I realize that one of the major responsibilities of counselors is to improve the quality of life of the citizens in your community in a subtle way. Let's do right by the citizens of Albuquerque. In this day and age, one of the standard ways of improving the quality of life is to improve communications among our citizens. But I was raised in one era, and you've all been raised, perhaps, in a different era, where communications are highly technically dependent. The primary mode of people getting their news and information in our society is television. If we can improve communications through television, that will result in improved quality of life for our citizens. You will be, as I understand it, considering a city ordinance in the future, which is the captions always on, city ordinance for Albuquerque. This ordinance would require that all television sets in cochlear accommodations, if they are on and cochlearly vocal, have the captions on in the largest gun size cossack. What do captions do? Captions gonna get deaf people like myself, who simply cannot hear the oral rendition of the dialogue. Captions gonna get hard-of-hearing people with hearing aids or cochlear implants who have difficulty understanding spoken word under certain circumstances. Captions gonna get second-language learners, who may have difficulty understanding the dialect of the speaker. Captions gonna get hearing people in quiet environments where the local of the T-Gay need turned down. They also gonna get hearing people in loud and noisy environments where they simply can't hear what's being said. Captions gonna get everybody in the community. So, I want to strongly urge all of you to do what's right and support the captions always on ordinance when it comes before you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Counselor Borrego.
No, I was just going to ask that he be given additional time, and thank you for being here this evening.
Counselor Gibson.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Doctor, for coming down and for talking about this. I, I fully agree with you. I think that there should be captions for the people who have any, any hearing impairments. I typically have captions on my television whenever I turn it on, so, in fact, it's a little annoying when I find out that something is not captioned, that's not available. So, again, I would thank you and hope that we can do the accommodations as you, as you described. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Steve Frazier, followed by Carol Slindney, sorry, and then Derek Scott, followed by Tad Namenski.
President Penya, members of the council, I was trained as a hearing loss support specialist by the American Association, the American Association of, the Hearing Loss Association of America, excuse me. And I've spent the last 20 years talking to people with hearing loss about their problems, about coping with, with living with this invisible disability. I want to thank the council for your sensitivity to these problems, as demonstrated by the captions that are on all of these TV sets and by the hearing loop that was installed in your chambers. I've been listening to proceedings by using what's called telecoils in my hearing aids so that I connect to the sound system, and I don't hear all of the papers rustling and everything else that's going on in this audience. But when you get out of this council chamber, people are faced with the problem of what's on a television set. I have been in sports bars where the noise level was so high that I had no idea what was being said. I've gone to a gym where they had a TV over the, over the exercise bike, but they wouldn't turn, they wouldn't turn the captions on. The ADA, the Americans for Disabilities Act, requires that captions be turned on if you request it, but they simply refused to do it. I said, "Why don't, why won't you turn them on?" Well, people object. It covers up other things in the picture. And I said, "Yes, but the law requires you to turn it on if I ask you to turn them on." And, and the young lady said, "Well, I don't know where the control is. I won't turn them on." I said, "Let me speak to your manager." She went back to the manager's office. She came back and said, "The manager's busy." She said, "Come back tomorrow." Now, this is the problem with the requirement of the ADA. The head captions have to be turned on only if you request it, and when you do request it, you get an answer, "I don't know how to do it. I'm not allowed to do it. I don't know where the control is," or simply, "No, I won't do it." But if it was the local ordinance, I think it would have an effect on businesses. They would have the captions on at all times, and people like myself who have difficulty hearing would know what's going on. If it's 9/11 type thing, imagine seeing that on a TV screen and not knowing what was happening because you couldn't hear what's being said. Imagine a Bosque fire, and you have a home in the Bosque, and you have no idea where it is, or if you're home and your animals are being threatened. This is something that, that is a major concern, not just to hard-of-hearing people, but especially to the deaf, and we're hoping, the Committee for Communication Access is hoping that you will be addressing this issue when you consider this, this bill. I want to thank Counselor Borrego and Counselor Penya for sponsoring this bill on behalf of the Committee for Communication Access. That is an organization that, that was formed basically to look after the needs and concerns of people with hearing loss, and it represents people throughout the state of New Mexico who have hearing loss.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Madam President?
Counselor Borrego.
I just wanted to say what a delight it's been to work with these individuals, and, and I have to tell you that this will be heard at our next hearing, so we deferred it tonight. It was introduced, but it was deferred until our next November 18 hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Our next speaker is Carol, followed by Derek Scott, followed by Tad Namenski.
I'm here to address the same, same bill that will come before you in two weeks. Am I being heard okay? Okay. I'm on the loop system, so I'm not hearing myself like I normally would, but I became deaf at the age of 45, and some of us had later, some earlier, but that's why I can It does make a difference, but I was able then, at the age of 51, to get a two cochlear implants, and so I'm able to hear pretty well, enough to interpret, and, but, there are still some programs on TV I cannot understand the people speaking. And it's, it's an advantage, of course, to have captions, and I do use them as a backup for me. And also, though, it's important, I think, for the general public to have announcements that are on the TV if you're out, say, in a hospital waiting room. Well, they have not, they've had captions, but their captions are like, they're not even an inch high. They're like a quarter of an inch, and I've got good vision, but I couldn't read them. So, it really, this bill actually specifies the size of the captions, that they should be as large as possible, and we do have the controls anymore with the new TVs to have, to change that appropriately. Gosh, there are so many places I can think of I wish I had captions, you know, but emergency is really important. If there are emergency announcements, you never so know where you're going to see those or see the TVs that have them. I do thank you for having the captioning in here. It's been beautiful. I had requested an interpreter, but we don't need that with the captions. So, thank you, and I hope you will consider that bill in two weeks.
Thank you.
Any questions? Any questions?
Thank you.
No?
Derek Scott.
Okay, thank you.
Derek Scott?
Thank you. Sorry it took, I was sitting up there.
Oh, that's okay. Welcome.
So, hello, I'm Derek Scott. I'd like to make Albuquerque more aware of the way the city has been keeping up with people with disabilities. people with disabilities that are wheelchair bound. Specifically, for one example would be, when I was at CNM campus, a lady parked right in the cross area between two vehicles, okay? And when doing so, she didn't hear me waving her away, because I couldn't get out of my van. Well, when this happened, she then rolled down her window and started arguing with me, saying that she needed to be there for her, was it her daughter, that needed to pick up something. But she was in between two cars that are vans that are disability access, right in the cross lines. So one of the things that I want to propose is that maybe we make an ordinance that puts a, at least some type of barrier, or at least a concrete stand or something, to stop people from parking in those crossed areas, because this got so bad and into such a yelling match, that the lady said, "Oh, you people are just so, quote, blank, special." So that was very frustrating to me, I had to call security, get them involved from CNM, and then deal with that problem, unfortunately. So one of the ideas is, if I bring a problem to the city, maybe I should bring in an answer, is put a barrier on the backside, because we usually get out on the sides of the vehicles. Sometimes some of them get in the back, but that still would block people from getting in between those crossed areas between two vehicles and the handicap spot. The also thing I wanted to bring up is the atrocious problem with a lot of the sidewalks, at least in my neighborhood, in the Taylor Ranch area. It's so cracked and messed up, that it's messed up my wheels before and broken them off, and that it's just gotten so bad that there's no way for anybody to use this in an appropriate manner, and that I just feel like, that our citizens here in Albuquerque are being forgotten about, or maybe being lost in the struggle, because they don't have many people out here advocating for them, and I just want to offer my services, if I can, to you guys, to be advocacy for this. I do have a lot of specialty in it with the state Capitol, and have been honored in the state senate, so I really appreciate you taking the time to listen.
Thank you, Counselor Borrego. Did you have a question?
Yeah, I was just wondering exactly where that sidewalk is located.
It's actually all over our neighborhood, on the Taylor Ranch area, so it would be from Montano all the way to, what's that, Gold? No, 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 it's that other street, I always mess it up.
On which side of Montano?
Montano, uncertain corner, so if you go to south and then the west, or no, south and then east.
So on the north side of Montano? Or on the south side?
South side, yeah.
On the south side of Montano? Okay.
And it's just really atrociously bad.
Our Public Works Director is here, so maybe he can ta, talk to you and figure out exactly where, and we can go look at that.
Okay.
Counselor Benton.
Yeah, just, the, a challenge that we have, that we need to have a broader discussion about, the backlog of ADA compliance is huge. We've talked about this over the years. There's a lot of real problems with, I shouldn't say problems, we have obstacles within our own sidewalk ordinance that have to do with a lot of this, because there is a private responsibility as well, the frontage of their property. So I encourage you to, to, to be, stay involved, and you know, I don't know if you've looked into possibly serving on the ADA committee, but that's a good group of people who's always on the lookout, so I appreciate your bringing it to the fore. Once again, we've always got to keep it right in the forefront of our minds, because as I say, if we were to try to do this in one capital program, I don't, well, it would not be possible, obviously.
No, I understand that there's struggles in the financial department. I understand that.
But the basic repairs of these systems, I mean, we have obligations under federal law, so thank you for, for raising it.
Thank you.
Counselor Jones.
Thank you, thank you for being here, and you would be great on the ADA committee. You would do wonderful things, but one of the things I'm asking, and I'm not sure, I don't know the answer, which is not the best way to ask a question when you're up here, you should know the answer, but do we know if we've ever had a full assessment of the handicap accessibility to our streets and sidewalks?
Not that I've heard of.
The administration?
Yeah.
Okay.
Looks like Mr. Montoya has the answer to that.
Thank you, Director.
Madam President, Counselor Jones, a little before my time, but yes, there was an assessment done, I believe four or five years ago. We have a copy of that in our office as well. The price tag on that was in excess of a hundred and some million dollars to do what was discovered at that, at that point in time, but we have not done a more current assessment, but we do have that in-house. We also have hired, within the last year and a half, an ADA sidewalk coordinator that works for the department, and Perry has been out to just about every neighborhood, I imagine, to do assessments of existing sidewalks, so we have an inventory of some of the sidewalks that are out there currently as well.
Madam President.
Counselor Jones.
Thank you. One more question, and have we looked at prioritizing, so that, you know, sometimes we counselors only want to do the things in our districts, and that's not kind of the way it works, but have you considered doing a prioritization, so we could start at least allocating some monies every year, although it's not gonna cover it for a while, but at least go to the most dangerous and the areas that need to work the most, so we can start prioritizing and putting it on our, our plans?
We, Madam President, and Counselor Jones, we have not prioritized in-house, that's a good point for us to consider. We do know what some of the assessments are per council district, and we could share that information with you as well. The problem that we have, again, is, is the financing of it, I mean, it's, as Counselor Benton said, it is a responsibility of the homeowner to repair sidewalks that front the side of the, the front of the house, and those sidewalks that are on the back of the house, that actually go up against the curb and onto the street, that then becomes the city's responsibility, and at intersections where you have the ramps, where you have a traffic signal or a streetlight, that is our responsibility as well, and so we try to address as many of those as we possibly can in a timely manner.
Thank you.
But we can do what you're requesting.
Okay, thank you, Madam President, thank you, and I think it would be great if we knew what the city is responsible for and prioritize ours, and then perhaps if, one more task for you guys, like you don't have enough to do, perhaps you could give each of us counselors, or at least those of us who would, it's a top priority for our districts, maybe you could give it to us, and we could start working that into the budgets that we have, and try to do some of these things, because I, I do believe, and thank you, sir, for coming up here and talking with us and making us aware of it one more time, I do believe it's something that we need to look at, to cover the entire city, as opposed to district by district, but I, I would appreciate that if we could have a breakdown of, of your priorities.
And, Madam President, Counselor Jones, and we can do that, similar to what we just did with the crosswalks. We've analyzed what the needs are per council district, and we put a price tag to each of those. We'll share that information first with the administration, and then we'll pass that on to each of you.
Thank you, and you know, budgeting time is coming up again, so maybe the, the quicker you can get them to the council, or it's more likely some of this stuff could be covered. Thank you, sir.
Counselor Benton.
And, thank you, Director Montoya. A conversation I had with previous directors, plural, has been the use of pavers, as opposed to concrete slabs. You know, we have a lot of thirsty trees in this town, and those thirsty trees are seeking water anywhere they can find it, and a lot of these buckling sidewalks are due to roots, so we need those trees, we need that shade, that's good for our environment, but there are also a lot of good paver systems that are, that allow percolation, that, that help the trees not push upward, because they would, would keep moisture within it, and instead of jackhammering out a slab every time and re pouring a slab, which is a pretty high, high energy proposition per square foot, pavers are forever. You know, if we had good masonry crews on contract, they could, they could remove the slab, come back with pavers, and when it possibly moves up again, they can go out, cut the roots, relay the same material at a much lower embodied energy. So I'd really like to look at that again, take another look at it. Tom Inakuchi has, has done some, you know, looking into, and I believe there's even a local manufacturer that makes a pervious paver, so it might be in the long run, you know, might be in the short run, that's slightly more expensive, but it really might serve us better over time.
Madam President, Counselor Benton, we were aware of the local company, they actually did a presentation to the department, probably about three or four months ago. A little more expensive than concrete, but we do have a, we have one project in mind that we might test the pavers, we're still discussing that in-house, but that is an option for us.
Be contested in front of my house.
Will do.
Counselor Benton.
Madam President, and, and yeah, exactly, and there, you know, it could be public, private, you know, this might be an opportunity for a public-private effort, to try to make a bigger dent in it faster than just the city doing it, and so looking at our sidewalk ordinance, and then looking at local paver technology, I always like seeing a bunch of masons out putting pavers now.
Yeah.
It's just me. Thanks.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Montoya.
And don't forget, just don't forget the other ordinance, like I was talking about, about the parking space, and that I'd like to work with you guys on that if I can, so.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Tad Nemensky.
After three months of being away from December for various reasons, so anyway, what's that timing? Here is tomorrow's election, Pat Davis. Well, he's running, as I understand, unopposed, but also, I understand, he's using public funding. Yes, people deserve to know who they vote for, what they do. It is important. Now, let's go to, over the, more than half century, I admire two Democrats. John Kennedy, President of the United States, when I was in army, when he, in Polish army, my native country, when he was shot and killed. Now, over half century, I am here in the United States. So, anyway, another one, Governor Bruce King. Yes, he made his statement. This state is nickel and dime state. For him, he was big man, every way. He was average guy. At a Lobo basketball game, sitting next to the aisle, get up and shake your hand. Not everybody, but most who he knew at some what. Anyway, now, what Keller doing, unprecedented. I never, after over half century, I never heard any president to be Bill visiting states. Thank you.
Thank you. Former Commissioner Art De La Cruz, followed by Steve Maestas, followed by Lucille Long.
Good evening, councilors, my name is Art De La Cruz, and I'm here representing Mesa del Sol regarding the regional park that we hope will eventually be located at that, at that wonderful spot. I know a little bit about the park, because I was the director of the Parks and Recreation Department at the time that the county entered into a deal with the state land office to have a regional park at Mesa del Sol. In fact, there was nothing there at the time. I appreciate Counselor Sanchez, because he was there when we had our groundbreaking for the regional park and, and the amphitheater. The reality is, and I want you to please consider, that this was always slated to be a regional park. We get a little confused when we talk about one sport versus another sport, but at Mesa del Sol, the state land office partnered with the county to set aside 640-plus acres. Now, people talk about a hundred and some odd acres for soccer fields, and that's true, but the reality is that it's 600-plus acres. Ample space for multiple sports, and that was the intent, and that's what the master plan called for. In fact, Counselor Sanchez and the other commissioners insisted on a master plan that had all of the detail necessary to identify all the sports that would be located at that spot. There are two access points to Mesa del Sol, I want to be clear about that. One is off of university, the other is off of Bobby Foster. When we talk about who benefits with this park, mostly it's the city of Albuquerque, because all of the hotels and motels are located in the city of Albuquerque, and if you build the 30-plus fields that are necessary to host a regional tournament just in soccer, not talking about Little League, not talking about Yaffle, not talking about a fieldhouse or an indoor facility, you are literally going to make millions and millions of dollars for this community, and for the kids particularly. I'm the former director of Parks and Recreation, and I can tell you that all my work centered around helping kids and families. Please do not rush in to a single facility. The reality is that you need facilities everywhere. You need them on the west side, you need more on the east side, but one last thing before I leave, I want you to consider this. Who also benefits? Communities of need. What is the closest community? South Broadway, San Jose, the International District, the South Valley. Communities of need, old communities, part of the oldest communities in our area. So I ask you to not move quickly, quickly enough so that you get your work done, I understand that, but at the same time, look at this issue holistically, as a regional park, 640-plus acres, to give you perspective, balloon fiestas on 300 acres is twice, more than twice that size. Thank you, councilors.
Thank you. Next speaker is Steve Maestas.
I went to the short mic, excuse me. Anyway, good evening, President Penya and esteemed councilors. My name's Lucille Torres Long, and I'm a resident of Nob Hill, and I just wanted to take this time to make a public comment, I will be making another comment at a later time, but Nob Hill wants to resurrect from the ashes. We love our businesses and the diversity of our residents. Today, I come to you pleading for 24-hour presence of law enforcement in Nob Hill. Law enforcement responds to the beat. In District 6, in August of 2019, there were 10,401 calls for service, and 11,004 calls in September. In Nob Hill, we had 629 calls in August, and 691 calls for service in September. That means that 10,313 calls for service are outside of the Nob Hill area. So with the beat, the demand in District 6 is so overwhelming for law enforcement that Nob Hill residents and businesses are left with excessive delayed response times and a, and are very frustrated. With the process, we know that more officers soon could be assigned, and we're hopeful that District 6 will get more officers to help with, with this demand. We urge you to really consider the beat, and to, to look at other options for policing our Nob Hill community. Our businesses keep getting broken into. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ann Hollander, followed by Franco Boyo, followed by Barbvia.
In the, in the early 1980s, when Roundup became such a popular weed killer, alarms went off in my head. Something this good at killing weeds must be good at killing other things as well. Not for a minute did I see this as the benign product it was advertised to be. Now we know much of the ugly truth hidden from the public almost 40 years ago. A direct link to non-hodgkins lymphoma, the decimation of bee and butterfly populations, as well as other pollinators, and likely implication in the disappearance of roughly one-third of all birds in the US in this same period of time. It seems anymore that the power of the individual lies in his or her vote, the ability to speak out, and the power of the pocketbook. I wrote letters to many outlets selling glyphosate products, admonishing them to remove these products from products from their shelves, or they would lose my business. One of the box stores did reply, explaining that they carried many products that did not contain glyphosate. They misunderstood where I was coming from. My boycott was aimed at the fact that these products were even being sold for residential and commercial use. So, why do I stand before you today? To urge the city of Albuquerque to ban the use of glyphosate-based products and similar killing agents, at least in the landscaping and maintenance of municipal properties, if not an all-out citywide ban. The sooner the better. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So, now we have Franco, followed by Barbvia.
Madam President, members of City Council, unless I'm mistaken, today we're supposed to talk about strengthening state laws regarding violence against children. And I was present at the last meeting, and unless I'm mistaken, it was you who was always saying, "What about the kids? What about the kids?" It feels like this is actually really close to your heart. I wholeheartedly support taking care of the kids because they can't take care of themselves. But my concern is, yes, laws help, but we have plenty of laws. There's no confusion here. Nobody in this room is confused about not hurting children. So, what do we do about the people who don't play well with others? What happens once we find the person who doesn't do what they're supposed to do? And for lack of a better term, there's this catch-and-release. The police, yeah, we get a lot of officers on the street, wonderful people like this gentleman right here. They put their lives on the line, they catch the bad guy, and if not the same day, maybe the same hour, they're back on the street again. Catch-and-release, catch-and-release, catch-and-release. It's horrific, and I don't know what the answer is. You guys are way smarter than I am. I don't know how it's gotten this bad. I'm assuming this is not your first rodeo. It's mine, I'm trying to learn as I go. I don't know what the answer is. It's just horrific out there. Once we find out who the bad guy is, yeah, we get laws, great, you know? But then what? And so, please, if you guys can think about what we could do moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbvia.
Good evening, Madam President and councilors. My name is Barbilla. I wish to publicly thank Councilwoman Borrego for the op-ed in the Albuquerque Journal, I believe it was on October 9th. I totally agree with that the IDO was pushed through without proper vetting. Input from the public was never taken into consideration, and citizens were never allowed to vote on it. Too often, the public is left out of the equation, and we're the ones paying the price. On another subject, I don't know who is responsible for lumping the homeless funding with another item on the bill for the ballot for tomorrow, but I feel that it was totally improper. If it's such a worthy effort, it should stand alone. Thank you.
Thank you. Leslie Richards, followed by Brooke Basson.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. On behalf of the 50 seasonal employees, the New Mexico Veterans Memorial Park, and the 3,700-plus attendees of the 2019 New Mexico Shakespeare Festival, it is my honor to thank the City Council of Albuquerque with this small recognition. Next year's festival begins June 5th, when we begin presentations of Hamlet and Twelfth Night again at the Veterans Memorial Park. We look forward to seeing all of you there.
Thank you. Counselor Gibson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam President, I'm sorry. Thank you for being here and, you know, for all the work that Vortex does. I did attend, I guess it was just one of the plays at Veterans Park this summer, and I thought it was just awesome. The stage, the mountains, the scenery that you get, and then as it started to get dark, just the black backdrop, it was, really enhanced the play. So, thank you. Thanks for being here.
Thank you, Counselor Gibson, and thank you, Counselor Harris, for your help in making the facilitation work better. We appreciate it. And thank you, Counselor Davis, for your support of the International District where our performances now happen.
Madam. Counselor Borrego.
I just wanted to thank you for being here this evening also. I did attend, and I was at the same performance that Counselor Davis, I mean, Counselor Gibson was at, and that was just an outstanding performance. I would very much like to see that travel throughout the city somehow and affect all of our districts because it is such an honor. I mean, it was so gracious and just the whole, the actors were wonderful, and it was just a really, it was kind of a bright light, you know, for that evening, and I just wanted, if there's a way that we could maybe have a traveling performance or something, I would love for you guys to consider that.
Thank you very much. We have considered it, and we're still trying to figure out how that can work. Our Twelfth Night will be a bilingual production this year, so we're very excited about having a Hispanic director, female Hispanic director directing this summer, as well as our production of Hamlet. So, we appreciate your enthusiasm and your support.
Thank you. We really appreciate the recognition. Thank you very much for being here. Brooke Basson, followed by Megan McMillan.
Hello. My name is Brooke Basson, and I am here today to express my sincere gratitude and heartfelt appreciation to retiring Counselor Brad Winter for all of he has done during his tenure to improve Albuquerque for all of its residents. My family first met Counselor Winter years ago when a near tragedy occurred outside our home. As a result of this incident, our neighbors became vocal and asked the city to prevent future accidents by introducing traffic calming measures. After the traffic department informed us that we did not qualify for any help, we contacted our counselor, knowing nothing about him other than his name. Counselor Winter took our concerns seriously, and today our streets have speed humps forcing vehicles to slow down in a walking path to our school, so our children are no longer forced to walk in the streets. Counselor Winter was instrumental in developing the Loquiva Sector Plan, which protected neighborhoods from thoughtless development. He has worked to develop our parks and is the reason we now have the treasurable, incredible North Domingo Baca Multigenerational Center. Hundreds of our neighbors gather there each day to learn new skills, exercise their minds and bodies, and to share a meal. 20 years ago, Counselor Winter probably did not imagine that he would win a campaign to represent District Four on the Albuquerque City Council. He has always put the needs of those he represented before his own, always answered his phone and returned calls, making sure he was available to the people who needed him, and to give them a voice in our city government. The definition of representation is the action of speaking or acting on behalf of someone being so represented. Counselor Winter has lived this definition and worked tirelessly to serve the community. I would like to take this opportunity to thank Counselor Winter for always putting us first and making our home a better place to live. Counselor Winter, you are my inspiration, and it is with mixed emotions that we soon say goodbye and also thank you for all you have done. I hope you know you are appreciated and will be greatly missed.
Megan, followed by Abraham Keyvan Chavis, followed by Michael Pridham.
Hi, my name is Megan McMillan, and first of all, I was told if I didn't make Brad cry that I'm not doing this right, so there's that. I have only gotten to know Counselor Winter for the last year, but I helped him on his campaign for House District, and I respect Brad more than anything else. He's a great man. I work for Wait Company, and so his friend Whitney Wait and Lauren Hyde have been with him for the last, since 2005, so, I don't know, 14 years at this point, and we all respect him more than anything else. We can't wait to figure out what your next chapter is. Hopefully, it's a lot of fishing, maybe some figuring out how to print photos at Walgreens or more technology. Brad loves technology. I just wanted to say congratulations, Brad, and good luck on your next chapter.
Thank you. Abraham Keyvan Chavis.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Speaker, I mean, Mrs. President. Brad Winter, I simply want to thank you for your service to Albuquerque and to this wonderful state my family and I have lived for many years and generations. It takes a special type of person to serve office and to serve the issues we face in our city, and I can guarantee that your work in this council and as Mafara's rest of you that are sitting in the City Council will be a wonderful example to younger generations to lead the city and the state. Thank you, and I wish you the best, and God bless.
Thank you. Michael Pridham, followed by Howard Hirsch, followed by our final speaker, Dan Regan.
Madam President, City Councilors, and I just wanted, my name's Michael Pridham. I'm the District Four Coalition President. So, we have about 22 neighborhood associations that belong to our coalition in District Four, and we had made a unanimous vote to ask you to support a resolution to name the North Domingo Baca after Brad Winter, and that's R-200. And I would like to ask that you support that and thank Counselor Davis and Counselor Gibson for supporting that, so we have at least three votes, hopefully. But thank you very much, and thank you for your service.
Thank you. Howard.
Good evening. Thank you for meeting here today and allowing for a discussion of decurse captioning proposed law. I think that we can all agree that our environment has become increasingly noisier over the years. For the hard-hearing community, it is often a psychological challenge to go into a place of business which is loud. Decurse captioning will allow for them to hear the opportunity and to interact if necessary. If there's an emergency, like we said before, how is one who is hard-of-hearing or deaf supposed to know? I also believe that the impact on businesses will be positive, such that the nature of a quieter environment will encourage more people, both hard-of-hearing and not, to frequent the establishment. So, I look at this as a win-win for everybody. In closing, I want you to consider this as a quality of life which whereby all can benefit by just a simple push of a button on a remote control. We must use the technology that is available to help everybody in this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker, Dan. How are you?
President Peña, councilors, I'm Dan Regan. I'm with the District Four Coalition. First, I'd like to comment on R-19200, the naming of the new gym at Domingo Bacca's for Brad Winter. He put 20 years in in these chambers. He's been extremely engaged and available to the coalition and the neighborhoods that he served. He ran the ops for APS for a long time. And in the midst of all that, every now and again, he did interim things like ran the, as interim superintendent of APS in the middle of confusion, and then stepped in and said, yes, he would do New Mexico State Secretary of State. He didn't do that, though, until he checked with D-4C. That's my understanding. I wasn't part of it then. Secondly, I'd like to address O-1979. It's my understanding that this proposal is to delay the council consideration of Batch Two voluntary conversions. I looked at the batch list, 179 pages with 1,492 different cases on it. It is also my understanding, and I'll excerpt from an email that I got today from Shanna Schultz, that the intent is to delay it for two weeks. There's a handful of folks who were given until October 31st to provide missing information on their matters, and that they hadn't been received October 31st. There's an interest in allowing these folks two more weeks to provide that information we need. I'm fine with that, but my question is, what happens if there are situations, and I think we have some that are pretty close, where the timing for neighborhood edge protection is tied to these? I'd like to see some accommodation made for residential owners who may be harmed by the two-week delay because they don't get their neighborhood edge registered.
Thank you.
And I understand there were no dates promised to anybody. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So, we are now on Item 11 announcements. Counselor Benton.
Thank you, Madam President. There will be a Land Use Planning and Zoning Committee meeting on Wednesday, November 13th, at 5:00 PM in the Council Committee Room on the night floor.
Counselor Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. The Finance and Government Operations Committee meeting scheduled for Monday, November 25th, is canceled. That's the week of Thanksgiving. The next Finance and Government Operations Committee meeting is scheduled for Monday, December 9th, and I just want to alert all councilors and administration to this because if we have a next, FICO meeting is on December 9th, and it comes out with regular action on December 9th, the meeting's in January. So, if anyone wants to get something on the committee meeting, I mean, the council meeting next, or do something, holdover, whatever, just be aware of that.
Thank you. And I just want to make an announcement. Counselor Borrego, Counselor Sanchez, and I will be hosting a Veterans Breakfast this Thursday, at 7:00 AM at 5921 Central Northwest. Item 12, public hearings are none. Item 13, approvals. EC 468, ground lease agreement between the city of Albuquerque and Operating Engineers' Local 953 Journeyman and Apprenticeship Training Trust Fund. I move approval. There's a motion, second. Anyone signed up to speak? Questions from the councilor? All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Pose no, motion passes. EC 473, request to approve supplemental agreement with the Albuquerque Hispanic Chamber of Commerce to oversee the creation and launch of a public engagement campaign. I move approval. Is there anyone signed up to speak? Counselor Jones.
Is there anyone signed up to speak? Thank you, Madam President. Just a few questions of the administration, please. So, what, were there RFPs put forth, request or proposal? And if so, did we get any response, and from whom?
Counsel President Peña, Counselor Jones, no, there were no other RFPs for this particular project.
Okay. And therefore, that is the reason why this is a sole source?
Madam President, Counselor Jones, no, actually, the scope of the campaign that is contemplated is, falls directly within the specialized skill and knowledge of the Albuquerque Hispanic Chamber, of the current scope of what they are doing. Now, this proposed campaign expands upon that, again, utilizing those highly specialized, you know, services and, I'm sorry, relationships that they have under the current existing contract. Now, it was our recommendation that, to eliminate any questions, that this did, the amendment should go through the sole source process, which it did, which is the check and balance to ensure that if there were any other folks who are, who alleged or who wanted to do or capable of performing this type of work, that they could file a protest. That was posted on September 27th through the Sunshine Portal. That expired on October 28th with no protest.
Madam President.
Counselor Jones.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Agar. At least one more question. So, these are specialized skills, so is, I understand this is mostly PR-type of stuff and marketing? Are they, is this group, the Hispanic, are they? Are they, is, is this group, the Hispano, are they, are they a marketing firm? Are they a PR firm? What were their specialized skills that caused them to get this without an RFP to other PR and marketing firms?
Well, Madam President, Counselor, in 2016, when this, when this contract was adopted as a sole source contract by the council, they, the intent was clear that they've been servicing the Albuquerque community since 1975, as, as was memorialized within the justification. They are in a unique position to know our community, to be able to celebrate and to broadcast. That is not simply a marketing tool. I mean, part of this is with the, you know, to dovetail, a small part of this is, is recruitment, not just of police officers for purposes of our overall compliance, but also other folks to be able to come in and to celebrate the Albuquerque community and draw new candidates for both public and private endeavors. So it is much broader than, than, you know, than just one focused niche, but it's primarily focused on broad, on celebrating our, our community.
Madam President? Thank you. And I'm, this is a very indelicate question, but I have to ask it. So, is this because we are searching for, and this is a sole search, search for minority people to serve, or it, or, or does this group, because it is called the Hispano Chamber of Commerce, are they, tell me what groups we're trying to find and bring into, what kind of employees, what kind of people we're looking for? Is there, is there a profile?
Counsel President Peña, Counselor Jones, no. I mean, but, but what they are doing is using the existing highly specialized knowledge, the, the, you know, the, the contacts in the, not just in this community, but they do specialize in, in celebrating our Albuquerque.
I might have more.
Counselor Jones?
But I'll let.
Okay. Counselor Davis?
Mr. Aguilera, thank you. I just want to clarify, in trying to go through this process and figure out where we are with this, I know that in the past, the city has issued a, I want to clip, I want to split the difference here just a little bit. This contract is pretty broad in terms of its marketing, sort of the one Albuquerque idea of helping to rebuild up our, our, our vision for being a city more welcoming to millennials and all those things. But there's also a new component that's about recruiting hard-to-find positions, including public safety. That was a different contract and a different vendor in the past. Are we sure we didn't put this out to RFP at some point or some other part of this and cancel the RFP process?
Ms. Nyer?
Counsel President Peña and Counselor Davis, thanks for raising that because I think there's been some confusion over this. So as City Attorney Aguilar pointed out, we've had the contract with the Hispano Chamber to do marketing of the city in general for economic development for a number of purposes for a long time. And that was originally approved as a sole source by this council in 2016. When we first got the concept of trying to do a recruitment program specifically for the police department, we did put out an RFP to exclusively marketing and communications firms, as Counselor Jones alluded to. What we realized when we got those responses were, that's not really what we need. We don't just need a PR firm to go ahead and make a commercial and, you know, advertise for it. We have, as you mentioned, we have those services. We have some robust online marketing campaigns that are going on right now for APD recruitment. What we really needed was someone who could take a more comprehensive approach, the way that the Hispano Chamber has taken to marketing our city in general, and use those specialized skills and relationships to attract not just police officers, but also some of the other difficult-to-recruit and retain positions. And this council generously approved that appropriation in the last budget, recognizing that we had this way more significant need than has ever been addressed by a marketing campaign per se in the past. So that is, so, so this is not to replace those services, but rather in recognition that the RFP was just inadequate for what we really need.
And thank you, Madam President. Ms. Nyer, if I could just follow, I appreciate that. That helps me understand a little bit. And I, I have no, I have no issue with the Hispano Chamber's work in promoting our city. I think they've done a good job and been a good partner. My concern is that we did spend a whole lot of money before with a firm that was, as I recall, some advertising like 10 billion digital ads, for example, that generated very few leads and didn't do very well. And the recommendation we got back from that work group was, we needed someone who was very specialized in doing public safety recruiting because it was different. And I, I'm curious, what special sole source experience the Chamber had in public safety and hard-to-fill public safety and public sector employment recruiting that they've done? And it's my understanding, or help me if you have, have they submitted any specific experience that shows that they have that public sector and public safety recruiting experience that we haven't seen them do in the past?
Madam President, Counselor Davis, so you're right, there have been targeted campaigns by APD in the past. To just be completely blunt, they were not the type of recruiting campaign that the new APD really is seeking to put out there in the community. Let me give you an example. We had a website that was exclusively focused on tactical operations. It actually played helicopter sounds when you got to the website to try to attract the kind of person who wanted to, I guess, parachute into a neighborhood and arrest people. That's not what we're looking for. We are looking for, to Counselor Jones' question, we are looking for a different group of people, but not based on their demographic identity, but rather their connection to their community, their desire to engage in problem solving, their desire to spend a lot of time understanding the community that they're going to be working in and to really own and adopt that community. So we, we are actually not looking for another firm to put together a tactically-based, police-oriented campaign. We are looking for someone to market our community as a place to serve in our police department, and that is why we have changed direction from those previous campaigns.
Thank you, Madam President, Ms. Nyer. And I know other folks have questions, but if it's possible, at some point, I'd like to ask Mr. C. DeBaca to come join us and just tell us a little bit about what they're, how they envisioned to do that, because I know this is sort of a new role for them. And if we believe that they, they're the right folks and the only folks in the community or in the, in the world that can do this, I just want to be sure that we go through our paces and understand, because we've seen folks that have said they could do it before. And I agree with you, I didn't like that other campaign. It didn't work. We were recruiting the wrong folks. And honestly, our new APD officers did a good job of recruiting in-state, and that program has worked, and we need to expand it. And I 100% agree. And I want to see us recruit from social workers, and I want us to see us recruit from places that not, are not those type of officers, but ones that are really problem solvers. And I know that's unique, and there are some sectors. I just would like to hear more from the Chamber about how to do that. And I only say that because there was no information in the sole source justification about their experience in doing so. And I think we rightly wanted to be sure that we could find that they had the right partner or could demonstrate that they had the right plan, or that they have a plan to work with us together to come up with that. And I, I think we can do that.
Counsel President Peña and Counselor Davis agreed, and Mr. C. DeBaca is here. I would just say, you know, we always want to walk that line of not engaging in the work until the contract has been put into place, and we would never want to put them in that position. So the plan is definitely to develop the plan, but again, it's that place within the community that the Hispano Chamber has filled for so many years that makes them the appropriate partner for this work.
And thank you. And I agree, and I would just like to hear about their process of developing that with us and perhaps more that they're willing to come back and share that in an ongoing process and publicly about how they're doing that so that we can know that together. I have a lot of faith in their work and I like what they're doing. I like them, and I think they can do it. I just want to be sure we, we didn't ignore the, the rest of the folks in the community who might also have an option to do this. So thank you, Madam President.
Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Madam President, for indulging me. So, Ms. Nyer, so I think I misunderstood, or I heard wrong, or I understood, that this is not just for recruitment in APD. This is for other areas. So what are the specialized skills for other areas, and what other areas are we recruiting for?
That's Counsel President Peña, Counselor Jones. So when we proposed this budget appropriation last year, we talked about focusing, of course, on APD, but we also have issues in recruiting some other difficult-to-recruit and retain positions. For example, bus driver turnover has been a huge issue. I know Counselor Gibson has often raised that issue. We've talked about retention of architects and engineers, and we've been working on those pay scale issues, as Counselar Benton has often advocated. But again, the, the skill is, is getting people to want to serve this community. That's the, that's what we understand to be the common foundation of this campaign and helping our community understand, and communities outside of New Mexico, understand that special opportunity, and then how to plug into the, depending on your interest, to these different career paths. So, of course, the focus is on public safety, as it is with everything that we do, but there are these other positions like bus drivers, architects, and engineers that would also be addressed.
Thank you.
Counselor Sanchez?
Thank you, Madam President. I was very pleased when I saw this piece of legislation. I've seen the work of the Hispano Chamber of Commerce over the years. Our business is a member of the Chamber, and they have become the largest Chamber of Commerce, Hispanic Chamber of Commerce in America. I think that speaks a lot for its staff. I know that our Economic Development Director worked for them at one time, and she's doing a great job for Albuquerque. And I've seen the work they've done, and I really believe, especially when it looks, when we're looking at recruiting officers especially, because with the recruitment that we've done in the past, we've basically taken a lot of the officers from other cities and from other counties, and it's had an impact. You know, crime has no boundaries. When you take from other departments, it has an impact in other municipalities and other counties across the state. I'm pleased to see that they are looking at recruiting out-of-state officers to come to Albuquerque. I think, I think Phoenix now lost their pension plan, so hopefully we can bring in, bring in some of the police officers from Phoenix that will conform and comply with constitutional policing, is what you are looking at doing. But also in the area of bus drivers, I mean, we are hurting with engineers, bus drivers, and I think that the Chamber will do an outstanding job, understanding our community, understanding our economy, in bringing in people to work right here in the City of Albuquerque.
Counselor Borrego?
I, I was actually very happy to hear that this was a link that we were looking at making because, and as you know, that I'm working in my district to find money to create my commercial nodes. And in doing that, I've come to find the link between the business, the community, the crime, and, you know, our neighborhood, our residents. And I think that this connection that we, that the Hispano Chamber brings to the table actually is a daily connection because they have so many members, they have such a huge base. We just had the National Convention of the Hispano Chamber in Albuquerque, which I was really excited and unfortunately wasn't able to attend. But I just think that the base, and maybe, maybe Mr. C. DeBaca can address this, but his membership base and the base of Albuquerque is, seems to me like it's integral to finding people that, you know, can provide the city a service. And public service is not for everyone, but, you know, there are people out there that we could, we, we, I mean, I think we need to look at almost every avenue possible to fill these vacancies that we have, and, and that's not just with police, it's with transit. So I kind of like to hear that, but I'd also like to hear, and I think it might address some of the concerns that other councilors have, is what the deliverables may be in the future, and you may not have those tonight, but I think if we can show what those deliverables will be, you know, and how that, how we get there.
Counsel President Peña, Counselor Borrego, yes, we'd be happy to bring back the campaign for presentation as they develop that, and whenever you're ready to call Mr. C. DeBaca down, I think he would be happy to answer your questions.
I'm here.
Oh, look at that. See? No.
Yeah. Well, good, good evening, everybody. Madam President, members of the city council, I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. These questions are good questions, and they're questions that we're going to learn about. Certainly, we have, I believe we have the expertise to, you know, it's, it's kind of a holistic approach, I think, Pat, about the whole city, and how we're going to engage people in the city and outside the city, to look for opportunities for not only attracting people from outside the state to do this work, but to keep those that are in the city and in the state here. That is the goal that we're trying to do. I think we're, I think we're uniquely qualified to do that. I think we've been doing it for, I guess, 44 years. We do have the facility. We have computer labs. We have the trainers. We have the expertise. We have bilingual speakers, teachers. I think we have the reach. And, and now, I am a member of the United States Hispanic Chamber of Commerce Board, so my region is within this region that I think is a target-rich environment to recruit. Yes, Arizona is going to be an opportunity. I know many of the cities that are close to Albuquerque, you know, we've been able to recruit some of those, those folks. But, you know, I just think we have a unique opportunity to do that, Counselor. And I think we're going to be working very closely with HR. We're going to be looking, working really closely with the chief. We're going to be working really closely with the administration. And things are kind of flux right now. We're going to come up with that plan that I think will be robust, and I'm really looking forward to it because I do not think that there is any organization here in this city, whether it's private or a nonprofit, that promotes Albuquerque the way we do. And I think that's what's important, and I think that's what's needed here. One of our great successes has been with the isotopes during the Mariachis. You know, when they changed their name to the Mariachis, we were a part of that. And we've been very helpful in drawing that crowd and, and kind of bringing that excitement to that. We were helpful to United when they first formed. So I think we have that unique ability to get to many diverse portions of our community, and that's where I think our strength is. So I hope that answers it.
Counselor Davis?
Yeah, thank you. And thanks, Ernie, for coming down. I appreciate it. You and I had a chance to talk about this a little bit yesterday. And I think, I think my own, my point here is, I think we wanted to be sure that we, where we did have an RFP process for at least part of this at some point, and added this in, I think we wanted to be sure that we check, dot our i's, cross our t's, and be sure that we've gone through the right process and this is the right match. And I know the opportunity, you had to talk to me about last, about sort of how this process would work, gave me a little more confidence in sort of where we're going, or a lot more, because I know y'all have been good at recruiting, you've been good at selling Albuquerque to big businesses and small businesses alike for a long time, and I think that's exactly sort of the partner the city needs. But I think, as Counselor Borrego pointed out, it'd be great, and I know you will, to maybe, as, as that plan gets developed, bring that back to the council so we have a way to share with the public sort of what that looks like. I think that's sort of built in, but it was not written down, and I'm not asking us to change all that. But because of the nature of how this was developed, I think there's a lot of those details that get to be sorted out, and you all are good and creative at doing it. I support it. I think you'll be good at this. But I want to be sure that we feel confident about our process and that we didn't exclude others in the community, small businesses, local ad agencies, local recruiting companies who also might have stepped up to do that. But I'm confident that the Chamber knows how to do that well, and I'm, I'll be happy to support it if you'll bring it back and show it with us, and let's work on it.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, I just want to say, you know, I am real happy to move this forward. I think it's important for our community. I, I obviously have had some discussions about, you know, APD, we have, you know, the best force in, in the nation, I think, especially with our PRT teams and the community-based policing, community policing model that we've been implementing. But I do think that, you know, as I've said in time and time again, is that we really need a more diverse group of officers, people that really understand and can work in our communities. So I look forward to working with the Hispano as part of this, and as, once you develop the, the contract as well, I'd like to have some discussions because I'd like to make sure that the Hispano in there, that there's outreach to the community before we start making these, move the plan forward, because I think it's important. I know the Hispano represents a lot of Hispanic business owners in the city, large Hispanic business owners, but, you know, with the neighborhood associations and with the community members, I think it brings a new, a different perspective to it as well. So thank you for being here, Ernie. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Madam President.
I closed, but, go ahead.
And it's to your point, actually. I think the Hispano Chamber also represents non-Hispanic business owners as well, and I think that gets back to Counselor Jones's point. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. So with that, we have a motion in second for approval of EC 473. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion passes. We are now on, I'm going to move the agenda around because I hear that we have some students in the hallway waiting. So I think we're going to go to R 200. Counselor Gibson and Davis.
Thank you, Madam President. This, let me get to the right place. Okay, this is a resolution that deals with the naming of the North Domingo Baca Multi-Gym Center Gymnasium and indoor and Indoor Track, the Brad Winter Gymnasium. I'm very happy to be co-sponsoring this, this particular resolution. I think it's, you know, I, I think it's a big deal for the city and, and the district, up there District Four. And it's really meaningful. And I think this is, you know, a good time to do it. Maybe we could have done, even done it earlier, maybe. But, but I, I think that now is really a good time to do it because it shows gratitude that, that, that the city government has for the service provided by Counselor Winter. He hates this, but I think we should talk about it a little bit longer. Embarrass him. But, but truly, it's, you know, he has been on this council for 20 years. I asked him that just a while ago and I thought it was 20 years, but I wanted to get it confirmed. So I, I asked him, well, was that when Nixon was president? And he didn't really have an answer for that. But, you know, over the years, he has been involved in some of the, some of the most important work that this council has done. And I'm just really very pleased to be able to, to sponsor this and to, and to thank Counselor Brad Winter.
Thank you. Counselor Davis.
I'm not sure how Counselor Gibson and I got to be the folks the neighborhood associations came to, to sponsor this. And we told them, I think, that, I think all the councilors would sign up to do this and we can work through that. But Counselor Gibson said it well, we'll have a lot of opportunity in the next few meetings to sort of, I think, honor Counselor Winter. But I know there's some folks from the community who get to use this every day and have worked on this. And so I'd love to hear from them, Madam President, instead of us.
We have some people signed up for public comment. So we have Mr. Tad Nemenski, followed by Sidney Piles, followed by Mia Chavetta.
Thank you. My name is Tad Nemenski. Well, here is issue, naming, renaming, changing name everywhere in Albuquerque. Well, let's be goes, jump, point to some history. Every time mayor does something at convention center, their, all council names, placard is posted. I have no problem with this issue. That's completely public. And now changing name to Johnny Tapia, Al Huracan, Maclary Chapena and other, Sanchez, Benny Kidd, whatever his name, Place, etc., because why? This food distributor name was put on the street. Do you want to change it from Sanchez to, let's say, another gringo name? I mean, Anglo name? No, you won't like it, especially in the Hispanic neighborhood. In fact, how many people in South Valley live are not Hispanic? Lot. And who representing? Clary Chapena and on the north side of Central, Sanchez. And they all together rename me. I'm tired to it. Well, like I said, convention said I had no problem. Oh, how about wide the eye? There over there placard, five of you, Trudy Jones, Benton, Sanchez, Harris and Brad Winter. And graffiti all the way around, that where his name belongs. Thank you.
Thank you. Sidney Piles, followed by Mia Chavetta.
Thank you, Madam President. I would just like to speak in support of naming the North Domingo Baca Multi-Generational Center after Brad Winter. Coach Winter has been voluntarily teaching pole vault at Sandia Prep for the past four years. And it is because of his selfless, enthusiastic coaching that we have built a successful team and we are all so grateful for his help. I've never had a coach who loves this sport as much as I do. And he is incredibly deserving of this honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Sid, Mia?
Thank you, Madam President. So my name is Mia Chavetta and I'm a sophomore at Sandia Prep. Brad Winter, known to us as Coach Winter, is more than deserving of being honored in the naming of the North Domingo Baca Gymnasium Indoor Track. As an advocate for healthy living, athletics for youth, and most importantly, for the pole vault lifestyle, as he calls it. Coach Winter has volunteered countless hours and weekends of his personal time to coach both Sidney and I. And it's only with his amazing coaching and his supportive enthusiastic attitude that we are able to achieve what we have and that we are able to become the top two vaulters in our district this year. We are truly grateful for the opportunity Coach Winter has given us. And for all his dedication, Coach Winter is more than deserving of having the gym named in his honor. Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, we are back on, oh. Okay, go ahead. I don't have your name here. Do you want to say your name? You can write it down?
I apologize. Yes, they said she had gone to the restroom, so. Thank you, Madam President. My name is Janelle Miller Johnson and I'm here wearing two hats tonight. In a professional role, I'm the Homeowner Association Manager for Vista del Norte Homeowner Association, which is located in District Four. And I can tell you that Counselor Winter has really created such a great community for us, helping us complete three public parks. And most recently, we're almost finished with Vista del Norte Park. And that was something that was just, I really feel like such a vision that he took the next step with, after we were redistrict with Counselor O'Malley. So Vista del Norte, at our annual meeting last week, we did have a resolution that I think was emailed to all of you, that we are just so thankful for what a community builder he has been for this newer community in the Albuquerque area. And that that is really a legacy for him in our community in, in what he is going to leave in the way of wellness and recreation. In my other role, I'm a, my true passion, like Brad, is an athlete and a coach. I have coached for many years in the Albuquerque area, but alongside Coach Winter since 2014. I think it's important to note that Coach Winter and I worked in a no-cut athletics program. And like the two ladies that just came to the podium, they had no idea what pole vault was until Coach Winter introduced them to that. I think it's important to note that, to make of record here, that like Counselor Winter, Coach Winter does not limit his time and talents to student athletes just in our program, just as he does not limited his good works to District Four residents. Brad, congratulations on your retirement and being a tremendous community builder for the city of Albuquerque. Thank you.
Thank you. So that was our last speaker. Are we gonna, does anybody have anything to say?
I need to probably abstain from the vote. I didn't know whether I should recuse myself for abstaining.
It's going to be a close vote. You should not do that.
I'm not voting. So vote your conscience, okay?
That's called bratitude, right?
Okay, well, with that, I, just before I put, give it to the sponsors to close, I just want to say that I agree with everything that everyone has said about Counselor Winter. I just think he's an amazing individual. Prior to being on council, I was doing community work for many, many, for ages already, since dirt. And one of the first meetings Counselor Winter always says is when he was first elected into council, one of his first meetings was with me to complain about some community issue, I'm sure. But, you know, I just, so I just want to say how much I appreciate him. I think he's deserving of the, the naming of the renaming of the North Domingo Baca Multi-Generational Center. But I just really have to say for me, it just feels kind of awkward. And I, I just think that, you know, I, I kind of believe that, you know, after somebody passes, and I don't want you to pass. But, you know, for those reasons, I'm going to say no, Counselor Winter. But just know that I do think you're deserving and I would 100% support this in a different situation. So, thank you. Counselor Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam President. I will be supporting this legislation. I want to thank Counselor Gibson and Counselor Davis for this recognition for Dr. Winter, Coach Winter, Counselor Winter, Secretary, Secretary of State Winter and APS Superintendent Winter for all of your work and accomplishments over the years. And, I mean, you've been on the council now 19 years, 11 months and four days, and still counting. That will expire on December 31st and we'll talk more about that later. But you have 100% of my support in the work you have done for the city, the state and this community and the schools. Thank you.
Counselor Borrego.
Oh, my gosh. Counselor Winter, you, I was a baby planner when I, when I, when I met you. And I, I mean, I say that literally because I brought so many plans before you and you guided us through them and helped our city grow to the point that it is today. And, I mean, you, you really have been a mentor to me and I very much appreciate that. And I will miss your smile, your, I mean, and I kind of agree with Counselor Pena. Usually these things are done for people who pass and God forbid that that would ever happen. But I, you know, I, I think that this is well-deserved. I mean, I, I really do. I think that people, that should not be the, sort of, the, the rule of thumb is that, you know, people who have done great things for their community should also be honored. And, and I, and I'm happy to support this.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Gibson and Davis to close. Oh, Counsel Jones.
I'm sorry, I was waiting for us to introduce the legislation and vote on it, but I'll say this anyway. I've been privileged to get to work with Counselor Winter for 12 years now. He's even, well, he's not older than I am, but he's been here longer than I have. So, it's really important for everybody to know that not only is Dr. Winter very good at everything that he has done, but he is, he's been an inspiration for many, many people in this city. But for me, I, I've learned a great deal from him. I've had fun watching him. I've had fun working with him. And mostly, I would like to call you, Dr. Winter, my friend. Thank you.
Thank you. So Counsel Gibson or Davis, are you going to introduce? Oh, Counsel Harris.
Yes, and I agree with the things that have been said, the accolades about Counselor Winter. However, I am going to vote for it, but I, I do think that perhaps we should consider a policy about naming things for people who are alive. There's, the one, the one, a famous example is the, all the roads and so forth that were named after Mark McGuire before they realized he cheated so much to get, to hit all those home runs. So I, I think Brad Winter has, lives such a boring life. He's probably pretty safe to name something after. But it, we, it, we might want to think about a policy. I think some government agencies do have those policies. We don't, and I think it's worthy, so I'm going to vote for it.
So if you want to introduce the legislation, one of you?
Sorry about that. So I will move for approval for R 20, naming the North Domingo Baca Multi-Gen Center Gymnasium and Indoor Track, the Brad Winter Gymnasium.
So R 200?
Yeah, it's R 200.
R 200. So there's a motion.
Second.
There's a motion second. All those in favor say yes. Oppose, no. No, sorry. Sorry, Brad. Motion passes. So next item we are on, I'm going to move around again, actually, R 193. So this, at the request of Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Madam President. Just for the record, to get us started, I'll make a motion for a due pass on R 193. And a second for Counsel Jones, thank you. This is declaring the property of 5401 Catherine Avenue Southeast, a public nuisance. And if it's okay with the President, I think it'd be okay if we discussed 192 and 93 together with both public comment because the respondents are the same and the information is the same.
Sure.
Thank you, ma'am.
There was, the request came in for just the one, but yes, absolutely.
If that's okay. And then, Madam President, coming around is a brief floor amendment. If I can move it, I would move floor amendment number one to 19, or 19193. Very briefly, this is on page three, line 24, striking Section Three and replace it with the following. Section Three would say if there's a failure of compliance with the provisions of Section Two, the city attorney is directed to pursue all appropriate legal remedies to abate the nuisance. In the original draft, it only listed, or only authorized a city attorney to pursue criminal options. We want to leave open all the other civil remedies that are available as well. So I would move floor amendment number one.
I think you needed me to move the bill first.
I think we did. I'm sorry, Madam President.
Did you?
I think we did. And Counsel Jones, second for the record. Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry.
Okay, so there's a motion and was there a second for floor amendment number one? All those in favor say yes. Oppose, no. Motion passes back on the bill.
Thank you, Madam President. If it's okay, I'd like to move to public comment and then we can have the city attorney and seat of legal is here to help us walk through this process a little bit.
Okay, our, we have one person signed up to speak and that's Mark Rhodes.
If I may, I signed up for both resolutions.
Yes. Did you want to speak on both of them or?
I do because I'm 711th attorney.
That saves us two minutes. Thank you.
No, I don't want to save two minutes. I want to talk more on both resolutions. And I spoke, signed up specifically so I could. First, I'd like to apologize for not being here on September 4th when the original resolution was presented. And the reason I wasn't here is, one, I got no notice. Two, I was at home preparing for a meeting that I had confirmed with Councilman Davis. And I have with me somewhere, they may have disappeared at this point. Okay, there they are. The Regional Director of Operation and the District Manager. I had for that meeting, literally driving to Albuquerque as the council was acting on the resolution, the Vice President of Operations of 711. He can't be here tonight and so he has sent this gentleman, Ernie, and I can't pronounce Ernie's last name. The process, the process was started by virtue of, I listened to several adverse comments.
Hold on one second, sir. If you could actually take a seat, we're only allowed one person at the podium.
I'm sorry. I listened to several adverse comments in June of this year that were brought up in the context of a liquor license hearing. Liquor licenses generally is a much more restrictive transfer process. It's not as easy to stop a transfer. Councilman Winter had weighed in in opposition of the transfer on both of these locations. And I did what I was supposed to do as the representative of 711. But afterwards, I reached out to Councilman Winter, I'm sorry. I listened to all these accolades, which by the way are true based on my knowing you. I reached out to Councilman Davis in July 19th saying in effect, I agree. The purpose of this letter is to invite you that 711 has listened to you and the neighborhood's concerns, that we will be following up with you regarding a proposal. As I noted during the hearings, solutions require action by 711. May I continue?
Counselor Davis.
Madam President, be okay. Will we allow him just to have his other second, his other two minutes at this term too? Just to cover both properties?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, both of you and all of you. I said, as I noted before the hearing, solutions require action by 711. The city and the affected neighborhoods working together. In that spirit, I have spent a copy of this letter to Mr. Ister, who was then, and I presume now, still the head of Nob Hill Neighborhood Association. What ended up happening then is, is that 711 went on voluntarily to make a series of improvements. They lit their stores, they painted their stores, they created an action plan which included the outright renovation of their stores, which has happened throughout the city. What was supposed to happen was that we had a proposal. We thought we were working voluntarily with the city. We set up the meeting and during the course of the meeting, and things happened. I don't know what all the rest of the facts are, but during the course of the meeting, I learned about these resolutions because I was sitting at a conference table and Councilman Davis handed to me in the midst of the meeting. So I had no ability to do anything. Now, this is not about crying because I'm too old to cry in my profession. This is about, the resolution says, I've got 50- old to cry in my profession. This is about, the resolution says, "I've got 15 days, basically, to either reach a nuisance abatement agreement, or suit gets filed, or it can be filed." Here's the problem. This nuisance abatement has presented to us as...may I finish my thought, and I will not abuse the privilege?
30 seconds.
Okay, in that case. What happened is, is that it was required of us that there would be an ADAPT inspection. ADAPT, for...I learned of this, so I'll just abandon and dilapidated properties. I had a very hard time going back to my client and explaining how this had any context with public nuisance, particularly when this body made a decision without an inspection.
Counselor Davis?
Let him finish that sentence, Madam President.
I appreciate that.
I'm sure we'll have some questions after.
Okay. This body made its decision without an inspection, and we have asked on four separate occasions to be sent a nuisance abatement draft.
Thank you.
Every time. This isn't a question of delaying or procrastinating or stonewalling. We keep saying, "Send us the draft," and they keep saying, they being the city attorney. By the way, they have been incredibly professional with me and extremely cooperative in terms of explaining.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
So, our next person signed up to speak on R-19192 is Jill Fraley, followed by Sandra A. Mueller, followed by Tad Neminski.
Thank you, Madam President and the council. There's been cosmetic changes only. The homeless, the mentally ill, the drug addicted, and any number of the kind of people that congregate at this 7-Eleven are not affected by lighting changes or paint. So, I had brought up several times, why can't there be a security officer on site? That wasn't acceptable to the owner. No change has happened, except cosmetic, and it's not going to fix the problem. And the police have been called 400-plus times. Fire department has been called 100 and some odd times. This is very costly. The public gets neglected, because the officers have to go to these kinds of calls. And I have to tell you, I hope that this bill of nuisance abatement passes, because somebody has to force the owner to make real changes, like a security officer, like more rules that govern that site. So, I cannot tell you how committed I am to keep fighting what's going on there. It affects the neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Sandra A. Miller, A. Miller? Is that who you said?
It's A. Miller.
A. Miller. Thank you.
A. U. Miller. And I'm a resident on Solano Drive. I've lived there for 26 years. This has always been a problem location for me, but it's become even more so in the last five to 10 years. Now, we've had over 400 calls in that area in a 16-month period, and you'll learn that some of those calls had to do with stabbings, larceny, all kinds of violent crimes. And that's just one part of the issue. For me, I live in the neighborhood. It has become a quality-of-life issue, of quality of safety and concerns that I have. So, since I've been in that neighborhood, I used to go to it all the time to the...it's a convenience store to pick up things like bread and orange juice and things. I have not been in that store for over 10 years, because of the number of people that frequent that area, that are on the property premises. They're drinking. They're inebriated. They're going into our neighborhoods within one to two-block circumference, and they're doing things like property damages. They're taking off their clothes. They're urinating on my lawn. They're taking their small liquor bottles, and after they're consuming it, they're throwing it there and trashing it. So, it's become a quality-of-life issue. It's a safety concern for me, and not only the stressors on the city services, such as the fire department and the police department, but just the fact that you no longer feel safe in your own neighborhood. So, thank you, and I'm going to ask you to approve the passage of this abatement, R-19192.
Mr. Neminski, followed by Lucille Long, followed by Barb.
Thank you. Speak about nuisance. This council just failed to recognize who's creating bigger nuisance. Yes, the city council. Are the city councils a constitutional government? They are not. That should be overturned at federal court, even state. State is constitutional government, have three-level gubernamental. Here is only two, and that makes it unconstitutional. Well, go to the nuisance. Look at all these liquor bottles, all this trash all over downtown. It's a little bit outside the downtown, when nobody cleaning up. People lying on the streets, camping, et cetera, et cetera. Same thing along the Central Avenue, Zuni, and so on. Davis, look at Zuni over there around Pennsylvania. What's going on? Same thing on Central. Where you clean up? Where are you going to clean up? My question, answer. Can't you recognize that? Only one? Yes, these people's going to fight in federal court. This court might be in a federal court. And I encourage you to constitutional rights. Thank you.
Thank you. Lucille Long.
Chairwoman Penya and esteemed counselors, I'm Lucille Torres Long, and I'm the Public Safety Chair for the Nob Hill Neighborhood Association. Under the Nob Hill Neighborhood Board's approval, I would like to read the following statement. Position statement supporting the passage of City of Albuquerque Council Bill R-19-192, sponsored by Counselor Davis, a resolution declaring the 7-Eleven convenience store located at 3801 Central Avenue as a public nuisance. The Nob Hill Neighborhood Association is dedicated to improving and maintaining the quality of life for the Nob Hill residents. We are committed to enhancing social, environmental, and cultural needs of residents. Promoting community welfare becomes urgent when threatened by the ongoing problems at the 7-Eleven located at 3801 Central Avenue Northeast. Problems at this location have required police and first responder services that are in short supply. Between January 1st, 2018, and April 30th, 2019, APD has responded to calls 437 times, and the Albuquerque Fire Department has responded 119 times. Residents witnessed numerous incidents of public intoxication, evidence of drug use, syringes, and drug paraphernalia, littering of personal items left by intoxicated or drugged individuals, and littering of many miniature liquor bottles throughout the neighborhood and Morningside Park. According to this bill, this description cited constitute an ongoing nuisance, and the Nob Hill Neighborhood Association desires to have this problem solved. Thank you, and we hope you pass this resolution.
Thank you, Barb, followed by Jean Bernstein, and she'll be the final speaker.
Madam President and council members, my name is Barb Villa, and my comments concern both properties proposed as nuisance properties. The biggest problem with both of them is the sale of alcohol in small quantities that can be handled by drunks and druggies and people who don't have a lot of money. The problem is, they should have their licenses restricted for selling small amounts. There should be some way that the state could also come back on them if they're not going to be good neighbors. Just because they improve their property, it doesn't mean it improves the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
President Penya, counselors, I was at the Finance Committee meeting when the attorney spoke for the organization, and he knows well exactly what these complaints are. He is well-informed, and he makes the same tired arguments. They're priding up their location. They didn't know what's going on. They bought this property or this business and didn't realize it. Well, I think every good business, every decent business, has an incident log. And there's this many incidences. There's no way that they could not know this is happening. Additionally, I want to know why this business gets a free pass to operate and/or not operate and mismanage itself, when other small businesses in Albuquerque, in Nob Hill, local businesses, have to take good care of their properties, their customers, and pay for private security as well. I mean, we don't even...we have a 1% sales in beer and wine, yet we have security. And we have to. We take good care of our customers, our neighbors. Their bad actions, their mismanagement reverberate all through the neighborhood. Every morning, we are cleaning up the little bottles of alcohol and other things that their customers leave behind. I also know, talking to residents, that many have reported that there are inebriated people being served on the property and drinking themselves into inebriation, if they're not already inebriated. How is it that they are still operating with a state liquor license? I have urged people and sent the complaint form for SID investigations to investigate their liquor processes and policies. I know if we did one thing wrong with the beer and wine license, SID would be down there. But neighborhood did not, and residents did not know about this, and now they are learning that they, too, have the power to fight back over a business that does not care about them.
Thank you. So, now we are back on R-192. Any comments? Counselor Gibson?
Thank you, Madam President. I do have a couple of questions for clarification, and I'm not sure who to direct this to, maybe our city attorney. The process for obtaining or getting to an agreement, a nuisance abatement agreement, can you tell me, can you talk about that process a little bit?
President Penya, Counselor Gibson, our ADAPT team is here to answer any questions. So, I have Mr. Morrow and Mr. King.
All right.
Madam President, Counselwoman Gibson, the ADAPT process for properties that are typically brought in, excuse me, the ADAPT process for properties that are typically brought in first consists of an inspection that has an inspector from the FMO, an inspector from code enforcement, and a crime prevention specialist from the Albuquerque Police Department. After that inspection has occurred, their recommendations are then sent in to ADAPT, and ADAPT then negotiates a nuisance abatement agreement using those recommendations with the property owner.
Thank you. If I may, Madam President?
Counselor Gibson?
So, the attorney for the stores said that he was anticipating a draft or asking for a draft. How does that actually get started? Does the city provide, like, a starting-point draft? Can you talk about that a little bit?
Madam President, Counselwoman Gibson, there are two separate processes within the city. One is through city council itself, and the other is through ADAPT. And ADAPT, nuisance abatement comes about through that process that I just described a moment ago. The city council process, a nuisance abatement agreement will be proposed by the city attorney's office, once that action is requested by city council, when a resolution such as Councilman Davis's is passed.
Just one more, if I may?
Counselor Gibson?
Thank you. So, we also heard that, and we've seen, probably everybody in Albuquerque has seen the new facade, the exterior, which is very pleasing, very nice. But I'm assuming that when you say that this was initiated, the initiation of this included onsite visits, I want to just make sure that the inspection included the parking lot and the areas outside the building up to their property line, as well as the building itself. Is that correct?
A...oh, Madam President, Counselwoman Gibson, a ADAPT inspection does include an inspection of the entire property, not just the building or the structure that is in the middle of it. So, the parking lot would be included if a full ADAPT inspection did occur.
And you also, I'm sure, looked at calls for service and the frequency of the calls for service?
Madam President, Counselwoman Gibson, yes, I did, for the property.
Okay. And then, all of these things culminated in your recommendation for this agreement. Is that correct?
Madam President, Counselwoman Gibson, just to clarify, ADAPT has not made a recommendation with regards to the property. ADAPT was brought on at the request of Counselor Davis to help facilitate an inspection, so that potentially the ongoing problems with these 7-Elevens could be resolved prior to reaching this point.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Counselor Harris?
Thank you. And one of the things I have concerns about in terms of this agreement, is there a court proceeding? Do you file a lawsuit and then get an agreement, or you just get the agreement without even having to file? I mean, how's that work?
Madam President, Counselman Harris, the first steps that would be taken by the city attorney's office if this resolution was passed would be to enter into a nuisance abatement agreement with the property owner. If the property owner refused to enter into such an agreement or comply with whatever city council requests as part of their resolution, then litigation would ensue.
But one concern I'd have is, is an agreement like this enforceable? I mean, because it seems to me that it might make sense to get this in a stipulated court order, not just an agreement. And there's all kinds of concerns about contract zoning and other stuff. I mean, what...my concern is that if you just have an agreement without a court order, and then you try to enforce it, you might have a problem. Can you address that?
Madam President, Counselman Harris, the nuisance abatement agreements that are drafted by ADAPT are drafted by me, and they are made to be legally sufficient and fully enforceable on the owner. So, there would be no problem with that particular issue.
Counselor Harris?
Okay. So, with regard to Mr. Rhodes, he's talking about how he's done all these things. His client has done all these things voluntarily. And what the initial stage of whatever's going to happen, if the council passes this, is just an agreement, which really should not, to me, it should not offend anybody who's intending to do it anyway. I mean, so, there's not really anything that's, you know, all that aggressive is going to happen. They're just going to sit down and reach an agreement. I mean, am I sort of stating that or restating that correctly?
And Madam President, Counselor Harris, that is our belief as well. In our initial meetings with Counselor Davis and with the representatives from 7-Eleven, we were also greeted by statements that they wanted to make it to be good neighbors, that they wanted to participate in this process. We have been proceeding with that as the framework for our conversations. At this point, we have been unable to secure an inspection of the facility, and we similarly have been unable to secure an agreement to abate the nuisance as we see fit. In the absence of having an inspection, it's difficult to create an appropriate agreement, because we don't know what would be the appropriate remedies for the property, and also how the proposed changes would impact what we see as the appropriate means to abate the nuisance. And in the absence of the agreement or any inspection, that's where Counselor Davis has elected to proceed to where we are here today.
Counselor Sanchez?
Thank you, Madam President. My first question is, does 7-Eleven sell only property in the store, or has that been sold to new owners?
Madam President...
Hold on one second. Mr. Rhodes, if you could take a seat, please?
Madam President, Counselman Davis, it is, I believe, 7-Eleven is the owner of the property.
Yes. Madam President, Counselor Sanchez, that is my understanding as well, is that the corporate, 7-Eleven corporate offices own the facility.
So, basically, the name has changed.
So basically, the name is changing, not the ownership of the stores. Is that correct?
Counselor President.
Then I'm going to support this legislation. I think that Counselor Davis, with this legislation, I mean, 3801 has been a nuisance for many, many years, and it's been problematic. I mean, one of the speakers spoke that it's been 10 years that she's dealt with this problem. And the owners of the 7-Eleven and the corporation should know better in assuring that this is going to be resolved. And I think the only way we can get to a resolution, there may be new managers at this site, is to create the nuisance abatement agreement. And the new individuals that are managing this facility should work closely with our legal staff to come up with a plan that's going to make the neighborhood safe. And if that's the case, and they can get that done, because this is over 400 calls, is what I heard just a few minutes ago by one of the speakers, that's a major, major problem. And I'm really surprised that it's, we're still dealing with this. This needs to get resolved as quickly as possible for these residents. So I will be supporting R-192 and also R-193.
Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Madam President, and I appreciate the questions. And I just want to clarify a little bit about our process here, and then sort of get us to that place. Mr. Kuhn, thank you for articulating sort of what happens next. But I do want to back up for the members of the council who weren't part of that process. Mr. Rhodes mentioned that we had an initial meeting with the owners and introduced the resolution and made clear there. And then for those of you who are at our Finance and Government Operations Committee, was it Finance, FGO, or LOPS, whatever hearing we had, where Mr. Rhodes presented on behalf of the client their intent to participate with us in developing an inspection and a temporary or interim agreement. And we made clear there that were they to do that, we would incorporate the terms of that agreement into this resolution so that it would continue to be enforceable. But it's my understanding, and I'm going to go back to Mr. Kuhn or Mr. Morrow, I understand you may have had some, Mr. Morrow, you mentioned you've reached out to them several times and had some problems connecting, but they may have responded as late as like five minutes till close on Friday, is that right, in terms of sending back new conditions, Mr. Kuhn, that they had in order to get this done?
Madam President, Counselman Davis, you were close. The email that was sent in on Friday was sent in at 5:00, or 4:33 PM. ADAPT has been attempting to facilitate an inspection on both of these properties, starting back from September 12th, when Mr. Morrow initially sent out an email with a generic list of crime prevention through environmental design recommendations for properties of the 7-Elevens type, and notifying them that he would like ADAPT to perform an inspection. And ADAPT has attempted to do so, even after realizing that no progress was being made with the property owner, suggesting a limited inspection that would not include either code enforcement personnel or FMO personnel, and would only be limited to the crime prevention through environmental design specialists. And still, that has not been agreed to. The attorney, Mr. Rhodes, did send over a potential agreement if the city were to agree to three conditions that he laid out, one of which was that the personnel conducting the inspection would have to sign some sort of waiver, that there was no conflict of interest with yourself. And I emailed Mr. Rhodes back on, earlier today, asking for clarification on what was meant by that specific requirement, and has been unable to provide that clarification as it came from his client.
Thanks. And really quickly, Madam President, if I could ask either for Ms. Kuhn or Ms. Nyer, although you, as you mentioned, this technically is not ADAPT, which is sort of our internal civil process, that's a sort of pre-litigation to work with a problem property. ADAPT has developed a set of sort of risk factors that we evaluate to determine sort of what properties we determine to be sort of problematic for city resources. If we were to use that score, Ms. Nyer, do you know sort of where these properties would fall in terms of the city's determination of a need for intervention?
Yes, Counsel, Counsel President Peña, Counselor Davis, so just to even back us up one more step, so, because I think we started with specific questions and maybe didn't lay the overall process. So there are two paths that can happen when we have this type of nuisance. One is the ADAPT program, which is the criminal nuisance program, formerly known as Safe City Strike Force. The other is through a council resolution. And ADAPT has a 96% or 99% voluntary compliance rate when we are able to identify the owner. So just to explain what an outlier this case is, we have a tremendous voluntary compliance rate wherein pretty much the marshal's office contacts owners, and they have the inspections, they enter into a voluntary compliance agreement, and all ends well. So this is one of those rare exceptions where, since your initial September 5th meeting with the folks involved, there has just been repeated pushback, which is why I believe that you took the route of going with the nuisance ordinance, which is, of course, that other well-established route to getting to this, to addressing this type of nuisance property. We did have the, so that, as you might remember, the former Safe City Strike Force got into some issues by not having a thoroughly analytical process for identifying the properties that would be targeted. We fixed that when we incorporated the ADAPT program by creating a neutral, independent scoring system that takes into account a number of factors, including the numbers of call for service. The 5401 Catherine property has 98 points just from APD, and the 3801 Central Avenue property has 114 points just from the APD side of the score. That does not encompass the code violations and the other pieces of the score. And this is all the information that we have, again, before we were able to perform the site inspection. So we do have the marshal here, if you have questions on that side. But I just wanted to make it clear that of these two paths, I believe that Counselor Davis was sort of pushed into this path through the outlying non-compliance of the owners.
Thank you, Madam Nyer. Madam President, I'll just, thank you very much, Ms. Nyer. That's an excellent point, and I appreciate that, that foundation. You're right. This is extraordinary, and I want to be absolutely clear to my colleagues here, in not nearly as long as Counsel Winner's been here, but I don't think in my four years here we've ever taken this route towards an existing business. But quite frankly, we've not found a business that has so many police and fire calls for service. And this is also extraordinary when you understand the nature of the business. This is not a business that's open nine to five and then doesn't have one, someone present 16 hours a day to see what's happening. This business is open, not just 7-Eleven, 24/7, 365. There's always a staff person present. It's hard to miss the lights and the sirens 496 times, or however many times it is. And these are not just calls where neighbors are calling, or where it's the only place open at 3:00 in the evening, or 3:00 in the morning when something happens to you. These are cases where 195 disturbance calls, including shots fired, intoxicated persons and others on the property, stolen automobiles recovered at the property, more than 50 thefts and larcenies from the business itself, without any change, or in other words, they didn't seem to modify their plan for asset protection to keep the community safer. And quite frankly, our nuisance ordinance lists more than two dozen different crimes that can be committed on a property on a repeated basis that can be used for nuisance. And this property, as Ms. Nyer noted, doesn't just do one or two of those, it does the majority of the violating, majority of those crimes that would qualify for a nuisance have been committed at each of these properties on numerous occasions just within the last 16 months, not a long-term of time. And so as much as I would love to say that the businesses have been good partners with us, we ask, we've repeatedly asked them to come forward and work with us, like every other business has been compliant, this one hasn't. And you imagine, if you're living next to this every day, it is quite frankly a nuisance. And this now, the nuisance ordinance will allow us to either force them to complete a process with us, or exercise the judicial remedies that are available to us under the ordinance. And that's why we brought this to you. It's extraordinary. If it happened in your neighborhood, you wouldn't want to live next to it. And I appreciate the council's patience tonight to help us lay that record and tell our residents that we really are paying attention and listening and looking out for those places that are taking up so many of our services, so that when you're waiting on a police officer or a fire truck to come for your burglary or something worse in your home, there's a good chance in these two neighborhoods that they're down the road at 7-Eleven for another thing in the same day. And quite frankly, we shouldn't allow a business to take up so many resources without their participation and cooperation with the city and our experts to help them remedy that if they've shown they can't. And so that's a little bit of my close, but of course, we may have some other questions. But we did want to lay that foundation, that we have done all that work, and I think it's time for us to move forward.
Okay. Well, with that, thank you, gentlemen. So with that, we have R-192 as amended.
Order? I'm sorry. I think we actually moved 193 first. If I can ask Ms. Ortega to clarify for us, for whatever.
Oh, yes, we did. Yes, we did. Okay. So we have R-193 as amended. Everyone in, well, we're closed, so everyone in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. Now, R-192, Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Madam President. R-192 declares the property at 3801 Central Avenue Northeast a public nuisance and directing the owner to enter into that nuisance abatement agreement and directing the city attorney to file the necessary proceedings with the court for non-compliance. I move a due pass.
There's a motion in second for a due pass, but there's an amendment?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for reminding me. Yes, Madam President, there's a floor amendment number one for R-192. It's identical to the one in 193. It simply strikes the direction to pursue only criminal remedies and leaves it open to the city attorney to pursue other remedies available under the ordinance.
So there's a motion in second for floor amendment one to R-192. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. Back on the bill, Counselor Davis to close.
Thank you, Madam President. I urge your support.
So there's a motion in second for R-192 as amended. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. We are now on M6. Counselor Borrego.
Thank you, Madam President, and counselors. I wanted to give you a little bit of background regarding this particular bill. Several months ago, I was talking with staff, and we came up with some ideas about how we would, you know, because there's been so many problems with the kids in our, in our community that have been either, you know, murdered, or emotional, or physical, or emotional, or mental abuse. And we started asking questions. I started asking questions about, you know, how kind of CYFD and the police interact. And we started meeting with some of our police officers to talk a little bit about, you know, that gap that seems to exist, I guess, between, you know, child abuse and maltreatment, and sort of the gap, you know, with what are we not doing right, or where are we lacking, or what can we strengthen? And so that was kind of the result of what you see before you with this particular memorial is, you know, what are sort of the gaps that we could close to try to not have the Omari Varelas and the Victoria Martins and the, you know, Little Lilies that we've seen? And really, what we decided is that one of the areas that we could strengthen, the existing legislation that we already have, and sort of the laws that the city operates under, and the state legislature operates under, is where are the pieces that we could benefit from to help our kids be safer in the community? And so this, this particular bill, really what we do, what we're doing is we're reaffirming the city's commitment to prevent child abuse, and then also asking the state legislature to look at our state laws and determine where, where could we strengthen our laws? And how can we make, and this gentleman spoke earlier, and he really did strike me in terms of the catch and release. I mean, I think that is something that we, the DA is looking at as well. But I think this particular memorial, what it does is it asks the state legislature to look at our existing laws that are related to children and look to strengthen those, and find those gaps that are nonexistent, or they're just weak. And so tonight, we also have with us Lieutenant Sanders, and he's here to answer any questions that we have, because we ran this through city legal, we ran it through APD's legal, we ran it through a number of different groups that would be involved with this sort of issue. And we got feedback, and this is the final kind of bill that we came up with. So I've also spoken with, and Counselor Sanchez, you may want to weigh in on this, but spoken with Senator Linda Lopez and Representative Joy Garrett, who are both very, very interested in this particular area of our law. And they're both very willing to sponsor any, as this goes forward to them, any memorial or bills that would help to strengthen that through the legislature. So Lieutenant Sanders is with us, if you all have any questions. They did add some language that, and I think they handed that out to you, that talks about lewd and lascivious conduct, and that actually came from APD. So if you all have questions, I would like to make that motion, and Counselor Sanchez.
There's a motion in a second for M6, and we have one person signed up to speak, and that's Geraldine Amato. She's not here. Counselor Jones, did you have? Sure. Yeah.
Madam President, Counselor Borrego, my understanding is, just so people at home understand, this is not an ordinance, this is not a law, this is a memorial. So we are simply stating our position on something.
Yes.
We are not passing a new law, we are not doing anything law-like. We are just making a public statement.
Yes, we're simply urging the New Mexico legislature to look at our state laws that would assist APD in looking. One thing that really struck me, Counselor Jones, is this division of APD has gone from two officers to eight officers in a year. And the numbers that we see coming in are just, you know, just, I mean, they're growing dramatically.
Thank you. So is that a close, Counselor Borrego? Counselor Sanchez?
Before you close, Counselor Borrego, I just want to state, I'm looking at the memorial, and in 2018, there were 14,139 calls received statewide in cases involving children. That's an alarming number. And in 2019, there are 226 cases per week. I mean, we've got to do something and work with the state with the children's code. There is a children's code in place that we must conform with and abide by. But I'm really pleased to see that we've got State Senator Lopez on board and a couple of other legislators that are going back, going back to look at the children's code to see what we can do as a city and as a state to protect our young children. Because this problem is a terrible epidemic, and it seems to be getting worse.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Sanchez. Lieutenant Sanders, would you like to say anything regarding Counselor Sanchez's statement?
Madam President and city councilors, I just appreciate your support. The units that I run are dedicated to victims that are unable to help themselves or protect themselves. So we're always looking for individuals that will support us, or ways to branch out our ability to protect. So I just appreciate you bringing this forward, and hope we can continue to work together.
Thank you. Counselor to close.
Thank you for your work, Lieutenant. I know it's not easy, and I learned a lot from talking with you and Commander Burke. I didn't know about the dark web, and I didn't know about a lot of things that, you know, I don't think the average person understands. And, you know, I definitely hope that we can help, and this bill will help.
Thank you.
I urge your support.
Thank you. So there's a motion in second for Memorial VI. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. We are back on the beginning of the final action items. Counselor Gibson, O-81.
Thank you, Madam President. I move passage of O-81, that is amending Chapter Nine, Article Two of the revised ordinances of Albuquerque to of Albuquerque to remove the requirements for annual companion animal licenses and replace with a companion pet microchip requirement and registration of such microchips with the Albuquerque Animal Care Center.
Second.
There's a motion in second for a due pass of O. 81. Any questions? There's one person signed up to speak, Geraldine Amato. She's not here, so go ahead. I just wanted to make sure I announced her name. Counsel Gibson.
Yes, Director, thank you, and, and thank you for bringing this up. This is something that we've talked about in my office, in the council office, since I've been on, on council six, six years now. And so, it's, it's something whose time has come, I think, and, and I certainly hope that we have the votes to pass this because the way we've been doing it for a long time is, is you and I've talked about it, is not useful anymore. So would you kind of give us a little synopsis of, of this bill and why it's needed?
Certainly. You know, the synopsis is simply to remove the requirement for pet licensing and replace that language with the requirement for microchipping, which we can tie all of the pet data to that microchip. I think in looking at this, as, as we've analyzed this as a department, you know, it's, it's pretty clear that by doing this, we actually sharpen our enforcement, we reduce our overhead. I think in, in many cases, it'll help keep officers in the field where they belong. And because of the way that the program has been, you know, administered over however many decades, it's, it's actually losing the city money each year that, that's also been going out of state. And I just think that with the approach that we're taking in terms of just taking a community policing approach, that we'll be pushing towards a higher compliance and that we, we have to do something different. And I think that this is definitely the right thing for us to do.
Counsel Gibson.
Can you tell me again what the percentage of compliance has been for, for the old program?
Madam Chair, Counsel Gibson, currently, we are at 80% noncompliance rate in the city of Albuquerque.
Counsel Harris.
Yes, and I asked you some questions, and you got back to me today. Thank, thanks for that. And one of the things, I was one of the few councils who voted against the hard ordinance, and what I said at the time is this is going to drive down compliance. The more you regulate this, the less people comply. You're not actually increasing compliance by regulating more or asking more of people. And in fact, one of the things that got voted out of that bill was the, the sponsor wanted a warrant, warrantless searches of homes to see if people were, had their license, had their pets licensed. And actually, I called up the ACLU who called Martin Heinerke at the time, who was the council president, and that got taken out pretty fast. But, you know, we, we really, I think the more voluntarily compliance, the easier we make it on people, the more we're going to have more compliance. So I applaud this. Thank you very much.
Counsel Borrego.
So Director, does this mean that I don't have to sit in my little green card anymore?
Madam Chair, Counsel Borrego, I believe that's exactly what it means.
Yeah, I think this is an outstanding thing because you have to have your pet microchipped anyway. So this actually cuts out sort of a step in that whole process, and I, I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Counsel Gibson to close. Oh, never mind. Counsel Winter?
Thank you, Madam President and Mr. Director. I tell you what, I can remember the days, 20 years since I've been here, the issues we've had with animal control. And did you all get an award just recently that was in the paper?
Madam, Madam Chair, Counsel Winter, we were just voted Agency of the Year by the National Animal Control Association.
I thought so. And I'm telling you how far, how far we have come for those years that I've been on this council when we had lawsuits and it was unbelievable. You bring anything while I'm here and I'll pass it. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Counsel Winter, and congratulations on your retirement as well.
Ms. Nyer.
Thank you, Council President Pena, Counsel Winter. I was going to try to embarrass Danny with that fun fact, but I also want to mention that in last year's budget process, we asked every department to bring forward a negative issue paper, meaning a way that we could save money for the city. And this was the animal welfare department's proposal to save money for the city, and it was so practical, so smart, so really appreciate the work of Director Nevada's to turn this department around and also to save the city money. So thank you.
Thank you, thank you. I think you're doing an outstanding job as well. So Counsel Gibson to close.
Thank you. I just urge your support.
So there's a motion in second for O. 81. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. The last item of the evening is R. A. 5. This is amending the City Council Rules and Procedure, Article 3, Section 4A relating to the Order of Business. I move a due pass. So there's a motion in second for a due pass of R. 5.
Madam President, should we explain what that is?
Yeah.
So the people watching at home know what you mean?
I was just going to.
Okay.
Thank you. So R. 5 is the Pledge of Allegiance is currently recited in English at the beginning of every meeting of City Council. However, it's not part of the City Council's formal order of business. It's apparently done more out of tradition. The rules of amendment would formalize the inclusion of the pledge into the council's order of business and its traditional placement between the moment of silence and proclamations of presentations. It would also provide that the pledge is also to be recited in English and in Spanish at each meeting. So are there any questions? Comments? No. I will close. I urge your support. And as a matter of fact, before I do close, I just asked that the staff place the pledge in English and in Spanish here in front of us, most of, including myself. I, I don't have it memorized, so this will be helpful until we all learn the pledge.
Madam, Madam President?
Counselor?
I, okay, I'll go and then he wants to go too. So actually, I really like this. I really do. However, you know, English is spoken here, Spanish obviously is spoken here, but so are many other languages. So I would prefer to see it expanded, actually, than just to keep for Spanish and English. So I would, I would move for deferral on this and see if we can, see if we can expand it a little bit more. So that's my, that's my motion is for deferral.
Counsel, Counsel Winter.
Thank you, Madam. Madam President, I think it's a great idea too, but we do have, and we have huge Asian population, Vietnamese populations, and somehow, if we're being inclusive with everybody, how can we really identify and not just keep it, you know, English or Spanish, but somehow include everybody just so that, because of all the different ethnicities we have in this city? Thank you.
Counsel Davis.
Yeah, and Counsel Harris and I represent the International District, 23 different, mostly Asian languages in addition to Spanish and English there. I know our City Council, we work when, we have our public meetings there to, to ensure that we includes from the Asian Family Center, for example, other interpretive services. I, I support this. I think it's a good idea. Our constitution's only one in the state, in the country that includes Spanish and English as our official languages. It's important to recognize that heritage as we get larger and we can forget some of that. I don't oppose this at all. I wouldn't, I would not oppose a deferral to think about how we could include those others and maybe think about how we could cycle in other community organizations that could come in and help us do that as well. But I'll defer to the sponsor on whether she'd be interested in, in following some of the other counselors' things there.
Thank you. Counsel Harris.
Well, an interesting fun fact is the, the district with the highest percentage of Asian population is actually District 4, followed by District 9, followed by District 6. So, but in any case, we do have state laws that say that our statutes have to be published in Spanish and English. We were part of Mexico. I think there is a distinction between Spanish and English with the Mexican heritage and 100 other languages. So I think we have to be careful. That's one, my one concern about doing this is it could do the slippery slope thing. So I, you know, maybe occasionally, we could add another language here and there. I think it should be discretionary. Otherwise, we're going to be in a situation where we're doing 100 different pledges and then go to dinner.
So I'll just add, any other questions? So I'll just add that, yes, the reason I added it is because I think it's part, it's important, it's a part of our history of culture, you know, that we're in terms of Hispanic population in, in the city of Albuquerque in particular, is that we're a majority minority. And yes, we do have a Asian population, but because it's in our state constitution that we have the two languages, I don't think that it, it, it goes without, outside of other languages to, to be, for it to be translated into other languages as well. As a matter of fact, I had talked to the staff, but we couldn't, we couldn't make suggestions, I was told, because I did want to include that in. I know this was just passed at the county commission, and Commissioner Pascoti actually offered up an amendment that allowed for it to be spoken in different languages if people were to come to the meeting. But I was told, and Charisse isn't here, but one of the staff members said that we couldn't do suggestions. Mr. Melendez, do you, because I did ask that question.
Madam President, Counselors, the, the county passed a similar measure. They did it in the form of a resolution. And in that context, they had recital language and, and policy statements as part of that. The council is proceeding as part of its rules amendment, and the language that the county proposed was somewhat discretionary suggestive language. And that's not really the way that the council rules work. They direct the conduct of the council. And so, the suggestion that I gave was for your amendment to be directive instead of giving suggestions about the way that it would be administered.
So there's not necessarily a way to add that? Is that what you're saying?
Madam President, could you articulate what you'd like to, thinking about adding?
Actually, I don't have Commissioner Pascoti's amendment, but it was just suggesting that the, at every meeting, that the pledge be recited in English and in Spanish and then opportunities for any other languages if people show up to.
Madam President, that, that is, I, I don't recall that exactly from the, the county's proposal. I thought that now that you're refreshing my recollection of that, I recall their language being that they would invite various people from the community to come to begin the pledge in Spanish. But if the council wanted to amend the rules in a way that didn't prescribe that it only be recited in English and in Spanish, it could certainly do that. It could say that it would be recited in English and another language as determined by the president or at each meeting, in which case, the council would have the opportunity to invite people up to do that. You could do that without a rules amendment. You could do that as just a practice of the council as well.
And while I actually, because it's in our state constitution that we, because I think we should go to, you know, our website, everything should be in English and in Spanish primarily, but that's why I wanted it as a rules amendment so that we do recite it in English and in Spanish. But then I wanted, you know, obviously to add something where there's an opportunity for it to be recited in a, in another language as well.
Madam President, Counselors, if, if you wanted to propose an amendment tonight to your rules amendment, it could simply stay, say that it should be recited in English and in Spanish or other language as determined by the council or the president, presiding president at the time would be the effective outcome of that.
Could we say and? English? Sorry. Madam President, could we make it that we were going to recite it in English and Spanish and any other?
Madam President, I think a simple amendment would be you can recite it in English and Spanish and any other language per invitation of the council. That would give you the opportunity to reach out to whatever group or person that you would like to join you for reciting the pledge.
I think that would be cool.
Madam.
So we actually have a motion on the floor right now, but Counsel Gibson?
Well, see, this is why I think it might be a good idea if we just defer this for a couple of weeks so we can work it out. There's, I think there's, there are other ways that we can do this and still, you know, not have to repeat the Pledge of Allegiance, you know, multiple times. So if, if we could, and so I'll go ahead and restate my motion for deferral so we can figure out a good solutions here, something that you'll agree with.
There's a motion in second on the floor for a deferral. Did you want to speak before we went to evoke Counsel Harris and then Counsel?
Yeah, and relating to that motion, can I ask Mr. Melendez something? Under the current rules, can a president just invite somebody up to say the pledge in a different language without any rule change?
Madam President, Counsel Harris, yes.
So I think we already have that mechanism. I don't think we need to, to make this more expansive.
Counsel Borrego. So there's a motion in second on the floor for a deferral for how long? For two weeks. All those in favor say yes and raise your hand?
Yes.
Opposed, was that a yes? All those opposed, no? No? So fails?
Madam President, since it died, can I make a friendly amendment?
Yes.
That we go English and Spanish and invite if we want another different language?
As read into the record by Mr. Melendez? Yes.
At the discretion of the president.
Yes.
Second.
At the discretion of the president, is that a friendly? Okay. Can we read it out loud?
It was as read into the record by Mr. Melendez. So you have that? So, so there's a motion in second for floor amendment number one. All those in favor say yes and raise your hand?
Yes.
Opposed, no?
No.
So back on the bill as amended, or back on the, yeah, back on the bill as amended. I'm going to close. So there's a motion in second for R. A. 5 as amended. All those in favor say yes and raise your hand?
Yes.
Opposed, no?
No.
Motion passes. So with that, there be no further business. The City Council meeting is adjourned.